Welcome to the 6:30 February 9th, 2021 Titusville City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
City Clerk, would you read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the items being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens should not comment on any issues more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers will be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes regardless of the number of items.
Thank you, City Clerk. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? And a second? I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Roll call, vote.
Member Robinson?
Yeah.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. City Manager, special recognitions and presentations.
Yes, Mayor and Council. We have no special recognition and presentations, but staff request that we move Agenda Item 12A after 9E because they are related items.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
We do. Make that motion.
Vice Mayor and motion. Member Jordan, second. Roll call, vote.
Member Jordan? Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson? I mean, Mayor Diesel, Vice Mayor Nelson. Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add an item to Agenda 6B. Title of it is Planning and Zoning Commission Behavior. 6B.
Would we add that as a... Just making sure we get this right. Would we add that as a Agenda item?
If you're going to add that on, you'd have to have a motion and approve it to be added.
Okay.
But I understand it's for discussion, not for action.
Right. But it still can be added. Okay, then what I will do then is take a motion to add...
6B.
6B to the agenda. Do I have a motion?
No, not a motion.
And a second?
Uh, this is not a second. This is a question, discussion. I question whether that's something that needs to be done now or is that something that needs to be done in private? Because there are always differing opinions about what happened. I tend to watch the meetings, usually not all of them, but parts of them, and I think that's something that should be a private discussion.
A private discussion with whom?
With whoever it is.
Well, the challenge that I have is it's a discussion that the council should have and we can't do that in private, so...
Well, with that, I still have a motion to add to the agenda and I'm looking for a second.
Second with discussion.
I have a second with discussion from Member Stokel.
Yep. I would just like to say I'm open to seeing what Member Jordan wants to say and then given what he brings up. You know, if there is something... I watched part of the meeting as well. I guess depending on what it is, I would respect, yes. If it is something that I don't feel is appropriate to not talk about it, but I would like to at least hear what he wants to say, I guess.
And my feeling is if there's something to be discussed, we can discuss it. I'm just not sure about adding to the agenda to do it. That's really my only concern and why I asked that question and I'm not Robert Rule enough to tell you if we can do that. So I'll wait and check on that, but it sounds like we can do that.
Yep.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second from Member Stokel. Roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
No.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
No.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
I think I just passed three to two.
Yep.
We don't have any of those. Okay, pass three to two. That will be... Tell me again, where's that going? All right, thank you very much. City Manager, boards and commissions?
Yes, sir. We're on Item 6A. According to the TEC attendance roster, Member Tuan Lee has been absent for the last three consecutive regular TEC meetings. During a phone call on 1/26/21, Member Lee indicated to staff that his absences were resolved medical treatments, which he has since ended. Mr. Lee has indicated that he is interested in remaining on the TEC. The recommended action is the Titusville Environmental Commission requests that council allow TEC member Tuan Lee to continue to serve on the TEC.
Member Jordan? Uh, Member Robinson?
Yes. Did it say that he had been sick or something annoyed the whole time during that whole process?
He was under medical care, yes, sir.
Okay, I don't see much discussion. I'll simply say that I feel as though that with the explanation that I saw and knowing his commitment to our city, I am in favor of moving forward and, you know, getting him moving forward again. So I don't know what everybody else feels. There are... Vice Mayor Nelson?
I was going to make a motion.
Good.
Okay.
We have one card.
Okay.
Okay, cards.
Stan Johnston.
I'm sorry, I kind of forgot that was a card moment.
Stan Johnston, professional engineer. I met Mr. Tuan and I have a special interest in him because some things happened over there where he lives. I had a classmate of mine go over there and got killed and another one got killed. And we're talking about... Mr. Tuan is from Vietnam. And I've had some friend here in Titusville. Well, two friends died from Agent Orange. Mr. Tuan, his life has been intertwined as a resident of Vietnam with environmental hazards, Agent Orange, all kinds of things. And as far as the death of my classmate, it wasn't their fault. In fact, he was a First Lieutenant and he was a good football player, handsome as could be, dating the most beautiful cheerleader, and he was shot in the back, friendly fire. That's what happens sometimes in Vietnam. We kill our own people. So I'm asking for you to approve Mr. Tuan's membership. I'm especially concerned because I'm a veteran. My dad's a veteran and I have a great-grandfather who was a prisoner of war. His brother was a prisoner of war, died as a prisoner of war. Cousins died in Philippines with grenade. Another cousin, shell shock you call it, PTSD till the day he died. So I think it's a serious matter that Mr. Tuan, his life has been, let's see, encompassed by horrible things and that he's a good man to have. So, thank you and... See, I've got what, a few seconds left?
I don't know, I can't see it.
Yeah, so I'm asking you to approve him heartily and pray for his recovery, whatever that might be. I'm not sure what it is. But I talked with him a little bit and I welcomed him to our country. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to excuse the absences of TEC member Tuan Lee.
Vice Mayor, motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Jordan has a second. Roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yeah.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
We are at petitions and requests, I do believe.
I believe this is the additional Item 6B that was added.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Well, so you know, that's how it happened. I'm here and I got you down.
Yeah, right.
All right. We have a new 6B. Yes, sir, go ahead, sir.
I just want to just bring to the attention, to the City Council, that I just have a big concern with just the atmosphere of P and Z versus the relationship of the council. The council, as we have explained over and over again, are the ones that make the final decision on anything that comes before the city. And after listening to the last P and Z meeting, you all got to understand me. When it comes down to you talking about me, it doesn't do anything for me because I believe in the bigger picture. I was on the school board and if there's ugliness when it comes down to talking about people... I mean, I was told I wasn't a man, I wasn't a good father, I wasn't a good dad, you know, all this stuff. So what I heard was extremely disappointing, but what bothered me more was it was like us against them and I wanted to stop. It just makes no sense to me that we're the ones that basically have agreed to have the commissioners on that board so that we can get good input to make a good decision here. And I don't think that's going to happen as long as certain members of the commission believe that we don't like them, which is not true, which I found actually it saddened me that if anybody says that Robert Jordan doesn't like anybody, I find that just incredulous because Robert Jordan loves people, just absolutely loves. I may dislike what you do, but I will always love you, to be honest with you. And so unfortunately, we lost a member, a good member, a smart member, an intelligent member, and happened to be my neighbor. And I asked her to apply to be on that committee and she couldn't handle it anymore and she quit. I'm not going to get into the details of things because it doesn't do anybody any harm and I'm sure that's what you were worried about. I'm not getting into that because that's not what I do. What I do know is my personality requires that we get along. My personality requires that staff has a good working environment with everybody that they work with, including us. And I just see that we have this spiral going on and it's not going to get any better unless we talk about it. It's not going to get any better unless something changes and I don't know what that is, but I'm determined to do my part to make sure that the Planning and Zoning Commission understands that they make recommendations based on the information that staff gives them. Staffs bring it back to us and we make a decision on the thing. And personally, I don't need micro-information about any subject. We have way too many decisions to make to try to get into the weeds of everything that the commission gets into. We are to make decisions based on the information we get and information we get from staff. So I saw a lot of things that I didn't like. One, I hate to mention Peggy, but they wanted to bring Peggy in to have a meeting with her to discuss her communicating with us. And in my opinion, she communicates very well with what I need to have in order to get to the next step. So the big discussion here is how can we make this whole thing better so commissions don't feel like we don't like them or not taking their information seriously, which we are? I think there is a disconnect when it comes down to how much information they think we should have. And I think one of the biggest problems that I see is the fact that they believe, and I may be wrong, but it seems to me they believe that whatever decision they make, including any additional requirements on a developer or anyone, we should just take it as face value, which will never happen. It will never happen. So can we have this discussion to talk about how we can move forward from this? Because I don't want to spend my next two years worried about what P and Z says. And I also want P and Z and remind P and Z that everything is videotaped. Everything is out there for the public to see and I want our best foot to be shown on TV showing that we have an atmosphere of, yeah, we can challenge, we can discuss, but at the end of the day, when the decision is made, the decision is made, it comes here. We make our decision and we're in the minority or the majority, we walk away saying, okay, we made the right decision for the community. Any comments from what I just said?
Well, I...
I'm waiting on that name. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Robert, I would say that anytime you have strong personalities on a board, you end up with some of this just because of those strong personalities. I have seen a difference over the last year in that board. And I would say they're perfect. They'd probably say we aren't perfect, which is fair. But I see a spirit of togetherness, community, starting to develop. So I don't want to... I'm happy with the way they're starting to go. I appreciate that and I think they are trying. They may not be where you think they ought to be or I think they should be, but I think they're headed that direction. And I will only say that there are some strong personalities on that board and I won't say one side is right and one side is wrong because usually it's somewhere in the middle. Wouldn't you agree?
What I agree is that no matter how strong your personality is, respect is number one thing that you should have.
Right.
And I've seen some things and heard some things that should not be said. And I repeat, you got to remember, everything is videotaped. The public sees it and I just want our character of this city to be one of, yes, we will challenge each other, but we will respect each other. That needs to change for sure. And I really have a problem. I feel when I watch some of the video that staff is put in a position where they feel pressured. They feel uncomfortable. I don't want our staff to feel uncomfortable. I need our staff to freely give them information and want to give them information, but if they feel like there's this pressure, this thing going on where they don't believe what staff is saying or they don't believe staff is giving us all the information, that's got to change. That's not going to help our communication. And, you know, basically, I'll say this since I know that the chairman is here. I understand what one of the ex-members was trying to do as far as having someone represent the P and Z at this meeting. And I believe she just wanted to make sure we have communication and all that stuff. It is unnecessary. To me, it's unwarranted because we don't have that with other commissions for sure. That should never be something that we should have a representative of a commission when we get the minutes, we have the video, we can see what we need to see. To me, that's only to persuade us to go a way that they may want us to go. And by the way, to me, it's dangerous because if you're in the minority and you're the one representing the P and Z for the majority, your comments is going to be more of why I believe it may not have been the way it was. So to me, that's dangerous. So I understand what they're trying to do as far as, hey, we'll be here to back up Peggy, but I trust Peggy to give us the information we need to go forward. So to me, it's unnecessary.
All right, I'm going to move over to Member Stokel.
Thank you. Question for our city attorney. Are P and Z members allowed to talk to council members? That's not a violation of sunshine law?
It's not a violation of sunshine law for a member of one board to speak to a member of another board. Of course, it cannot be a conduit. A member of one board cannot speak to a council member and then tell another council member about their discussions. That would create a conduit situation. But technically, no, it's not a violation if a member of city council were to speak with a member of P and Z.
Okay. So I guess moving forward and my take on it, I don't know, it might be different than everybody else's. I personally like that board because, I don't know if they will appreciate this, I feel like they kind of play the bad guys for us sometimes by going through a lot of our really important agenda items with a fine-tooth comb. And so when I go over the agenda, I personally appreciate how much they do for free. And I think to Vice Mayor's point, there are a lot of strong personalities on that board, which brings a lot of passion, I feel like. So I guess moving forward, I know they're frustrated. I know we can be frustrated and I know they're trying to come up with some way to kind of better communicate with us. Again, my take on it is we get the video, we get the minutes. I feel like that's on us as to how much we kind of want to go in-depth with it. And I guess I would just invite P and Z members, if they feel frustrated with us or feel like we're not listening to them, to potentially reach out to that individual member to build that gap, bridge that gap. I welcome them to reach out to me. I go through it. I don't know if it's always expressed, but I really do value that board. And sometimes I agree with them, sometimes I don't. But at the end of the day, they are a recommending body and I would like them to not feel frustrated, but that's all I can do, I guess.
I think I'd be remiss if, from the mayor's seat, I didn't say what I was seeing. I saw the video the other day as well and I understand Member Jordan's frustration. I definitely cocked my head a little bit and said, what's that all about? But when it was all over, the thing that really surprised me was the perception from the board, P and Z, that there's not enough communication. And I'm... I mean, it's one after the other. Well, maybe we can do that. And that's how we've got Dwight out here now, simply because now they want to send somebody. And I'm watching that and I'm like, what am I missing here? I feel pretty communicated with. And certainly, you know, we have the videos to watch, so we go word for word. And I sometimes will scan through. I don't necessarily watch the whole two and a half to three hours, but I may want to know what you're talking about on this particular project. And I look at that project. And then I must admit, and Mr. Severs can answer this better than I and you will in just a second. When I first heard they were going to send a member, I would imagine I would be, if I was ever sent someplace as a member of a board or even as a council, and I'm reminded of that all the time when I go speak someplace, I can't really speak for the council. I speak for me and I can tell them what we are doing, you know, what we've done, but I can't speak for the council. And with that in mind, that's a little frustrating, quite honestly. You know, it's kind of like, you know, you're the mayor of the city. You ought to be able to speak for the city a little bit. And I'm not saying you can't get out there and say how you feel about things and where we're going as a council. But when I saw that, I thought, well, can any member of the P and Z actually get up there and speak for them? I don't know the answer to that exactly, but I also want to add to Member Stokel's part of things, and that is what I also see is a very in-depth, hard-working group that, you know, I think we've got, I'm not sure exactly, but I think we've got three lawyers on there to start with. So they're used to an awful lot of research. So there's an awful lot of research going on and I just can't thank them enough for the hard work they do and the sorting things out before it gets to us and that's kind of what you do. I can only imagine the frustration because I don't get the frustration part either unless we just don't do what you want us to do. And if we're... And I get that too. Well, we did all that work, we did all that research and we told you to do this and you did that. Well, don't get frustrated. I mean, that's kind of your job. I mean, and I meet with Dwight sometimes on purpose. As the mayor, I want to meet with the P and Z head and we have breakfast, et cetera. And I was telling the other day, the P and Z people out there watching this, I said, no, you're watching. You guys watch every week. Don't talk about me next week either. But anyway...
Oh, yeah.
That's with a smile. I'm saying some football talk here and this may sound silly, but I'm upstairs. That's me, you're way up high on top of the press box for my son, who's a defensive coordinator. I did that for him at Space Coast High School. I did it at Titusville High School and now we're doing it at Cocoa High. I'm upstairs on the headset. I can see better. I can... I get a better picture of what's going on and I've also got 41 years coaching, so I don't know something. All that being said, it's my job to advise him what I see and what I think, but it's not my job to say you made the wrong call when he calls a defense and sometimes it doesn't work and I may not say it. I'll turn around and say, listen to me. And I'm sure they do, that's okay. But to me, this is so similar. I'm an advisory board up there. I advise them what to call. I tell them what I see and what I think you should do, but in the end, it's his call. And that's kind of how it goes and, oh, I won't say that human nature doesn't say. Sometimes I get a little fired up and say, all my experience and all my in-depth study and you didn't listen to what I said? I get it. But bottom line is I want to thank the board for the in-depth study and the hard work you guys do because you guys could easily go 30-minute meetings and say, we're done, that's enough. We advised this, this, and this, we're out of here. And you don't do that and I appreciate that. Member Robinson?
First off, I want to share that as long as I've been knowing Member Jordan, I've never seen him less than professional. And also, I've learned over the years, as the mayor stated, that your information I will receive, but I don't have to adhere to it. It's because as all of us are, we're able to make adult decisions. It's because uh, as all of us are, we're able to make adult decisions based on our experience and what we think it best. But the feedback from the P and Z is absolutely necessary.
Is central.
We appreciate it. But I think P and Z needs to take on that same philosophy, is that uh, yes, egos could, uh, one thing that anytime egos are mixed in the mix, normally you got a mess. And uh, do away with the ego, stand on your professional knowledge, stand on what you are, think is betty, best for the city, and put the egos, when you have an ego trashcan outside the door, and when you walk in, drop yours in, and everybody drop theirs in, and begin to do everything professionally and say, this is our objective. Have their, and each have their in, uh, input, and move on. And, and don't try to just uh, figure out what uh, any member of the uh council is going to say. Because you don't know. Um, they are going to use your information, uh, and we hope that you give us the best information that the group is uh able to come up and agree on. Uh, so when you hear all of the nastiness going on and the squabbling, it does take away from the professional um picture of the uh members of the P and Z board. And like the mayor said, you are, you got lawyers, and you got former uh council members on, on that board. And uh, but think about the city instead of yourself, and move on from there. Because uh, again, it's not about you, it's about the people of the city of Titusville.
Thank you, Member Robinson. And that looks like that's it.
No, my life's still on.
Oh, okay, I thought maybe you didn't turn it off, that's what happened. Member Jordan.
Thank you very much. Now, see, that wasn't so bad, was it? That, that, the whole idea, you know, the whole idea, I, it's my personality, guys. I, I just love everybody, and I just want us all to get along. And we don't need family members to be squabbling and calling each other names and all this stuff, because it's, it's unnecessary. You know, we all have a life, we all are getting older. You know, one day, we're gonna be horizontal. And I certainly don't want my life to be that of just squabbling with people and disagreeing just because I don't get my way. You know, there's gonna be times where I'm gonna be in the minority. I like being the majority, because I think my answers are correct. Yours may be wrong, but mine are correct. But, you know, the bottom line to me is, uh, this is a wonderful city. We have wonderful people who volunteer, and I just want, especially, I'm telling you, I, I, I really am focused on staff. Staff have so much to do. And I just want to make sure that when they go to meetings, when they have to uh present um to these boards, that they feel like what they're doing uh is respected, and, and they know that they're honest. So uh, I appreciate what the Reverend has said, because he actually said exactly uh what's in my heart. And I appreciate you, Dan, for what you said, because it's what's in my heart. And I appreciate you, because it's what's in my heart. So let's just go forward, and hopefully, we won't have to cover this subject ever again. Because that is my desire. I don't want anybody to leave any place feeling bad because they're trying to do good. That's it. Thank you, sirs, and ma'ams.
All right, I think we are done with that particular agenda spot. So we move to petitions and requests. Like I say halfway, wondering. Stan, we're gonna get to you, but we're gonna put this guy up here first. Thank you, sir. Works out just fine. And your name and address, please, for the record.
For the record, my name is Dwight Severs, who reside on Riverside Drive here in Titusville. Uh, I have an assignment to be here tonight, so I'm fulfilling my duties and responsibilities. Also, I'd like to briefly touch upon what Mr. Jordan brought up, if I can, have enough time to do that. At the last Planning and zoning Commission by majority vote five to two, I voted against it. A representative from the Planning and Zoning Commission was to come and appear before you and be available to provide such additional information or clarify and explain our reasons for voting a certain way on an item, or if we decided to add something. Uh, and you will find in the record some of the examples. For example, one of the examples that was used at the meeting, uh, uh, there was a recommendation that parking only be on one side of the street. And that uh, commission member felt as though that wasn't adequately explained to the uh commission. And she felt as though, well, if she had been here, she could have explained it. But in any event, for the month of February, they've designated me to come. And uh, I'm available during the course of this meeting. If you wanna call upon me, fine. If you do not wanna call me, that's fine, as such. And um, if, if you, uh, as I indicated to the commission, we hadn't been invited to come. So I didn't feel as though appropriate to pass that motion, but it was passed. And as chairman, it was my responsibility to come. The second aspect, uh, I want to first say, Member Jordan, that I highly respect you. I felt as though you and I had an excellent conversation. And I just want you to know that I'm committed to building a better relationship between the commission, staff, and the city council. And the first thing I did after I was appointed, I reached out to the staff, all the staff, the city manager, and Mary, I sent you a copy of it, the indication. I wanted to build a better relationship as such between all of us, and I'm committed to do that. I think there was some inappropriate things, and I plan on addressing that as the chairman at the next meeting. And I just wanna represent to you, I will address that issue accordingly. Uh, with regard to how best to uh communicate and build a relationship, we're certainly open and want to build. All I know is, when I was appointed on the Planning and Zoning Commission two and a half years ago, that Chairman Williams at that time was very frustrated with the exact same issue and says, uh, are we wasting our time? And you can contact Chairman Williams, and he felt the same way. So there is an issue somehow along the way that uh apparently has persisted or existed.
Let me, let me interject there, because that's too important to go past. Where you're, where, are we wasting our time?
Because the Planning and Zoning Commission is wasting its time.
I do, I get that. Does that mean that when, if we don't agree enough?
No.
What does that mean exactly then?
I found. I, I feel as though what he was saying is, it's not being conveyed in a manner so that we can explain, or it's being explained in a manner that council respects or understands our point of view.
And you normally have that if council just disagreed with you. I mean, seriously, I'm, and I'm going for my own, put the headsets on, and I'm thinking, I gotta talk to him Monday, because I don't know why the heck he didn't do what I said to do. So I, I, I'm, I'm not trying to be negative here, but when the chairman says, goes back to the previous chairmen and says, after we just all said, we appreciate how hard you work, how deep you go, it's wonderful, and I also said, and I still say, I'm shaking my head and I said that to you between meetings. I don't understand the concern that the P and Z has for, we're just not communicating well. And it just sounds like every time I hear, are we wasting our time, are we not communicating well? It's, they're not listening to us enough.
Well, I don't think you will find the last six months I have said that whatsoever.
No, no, I'm not saying you did.
And, and let me just say this. I understand the role of the Planning and Zoning Commission. You guys make the final decision. I respect your role, and uh, I'm not sure why Chairman Williams felt that way.
Well, just for the record, and I'll let you continue, is, I don't know about everybody else, but for me, when I go through the agenda, one of the first things I see on ordinances, et cetera, is, what did the P and Z vote? And if it's seven oh, I'm feeling pretty good. If it's four three, I'm going to the video, and I'm gonna look at some questions. But that is a very key denominator for me in where I go. And I hope they hear that, because that's important.
I, I understand. In any event, I just wanted to say, uh, Mr. Jordan, I heard you, I hear you. And uh, I want the same thing you want. And that we all, it, life is too short at this stage to create any more friction than necessary. And let's move forward in a positive manner. I certainly believe in that.
I need to respond to him for sure. I appreciate that. It is amazing that you were saying those words, because that's what I needed to hear. So I, I'm looking forward
Yes, sir.
To positive results after this, for sure. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Member Stokoe.
I just wanna clarify. I feel bad that you're going to be sitting through this entire meeting. And I don't want it to be conveyed, should council not have any questions for you, that that's going to further on and say, we sent somebody there, and nobody even acknowledged him, and now, that, I just want that clear. I, I, I don't know, I, I, I just feel bad.
I, I think clearly that uh, and most, as, as I think I indicated to somebody previously, that last year, it was twenty-nine major head zoning items. We heard twenty-two of those, twenty-nine, the planning and zoning commission recommended the uh, the staff's recommendation without any change. So it, it's kind of a rarity that we don't. It, it, it does happen, and perhaps appropriately so, if there is an issue that the members of Planning and Zoning Commission feel as though need to be clarified, changed, and modified. We're simply doing our job.
And, and again, I, I would like to add, and I think I've said it already. I would like your board to know that the mayor, when I became mayor, the first thing I did was I met with you.
Yes, sir.
At Village Inn with coffee, pancakes, eggs, no. But no, no, uh, it was with you. And then I met with another board member, and a third board member, and then I met with you again. Not because we had anything specific to talk about, just to get a feel for what, how you guys feel. I don't know that a lot of mayors are doing that, but it was the first thing I did. And T E C was another board, uh, two board people I met with. I did a two and a half hour city tour with uh, Mr. My Jack, and I thought that was important. And um, so I don't know that, if they don't know that, then they need to.
Well, one of the things I've learned in life, if, if I have an issue with you, I will be man enough to tell you. If you have a problem with me, don't go around behind my back. And unfortunately, that is happening. People are saying things. And if they have a problem with something I'm doing, call me up and tell me. Just be honest.
Well, that's why I was
What is wrong with that?
It's important to, to sit together and talk, because
Yes, sir.
You know, during our talks, we agree on a lot of things, we don't agree on everything, and we can disagree respectfully.
Yes, sir.
So I appreciate that. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I, I guess a little clarification from what Miss Member, uh, Member Council, uh, what's your name? Sarah Stokoe was saying, uh, because the, the chairman is here, I, 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 along with you, I don't foresee us asking after, you know, Peggy says something, what do you think? So I know you were asked to stay here, but in my mind, I don't see us asking you anything. So you wanna be here because you're a citizen is one thing. You're being here because you were voted to be here. I don't want you to feel obligated that you have to stay here, if, if you understand what I'm saying. Okay, I, I'm not saying get out of here, I'm just saying
And we're all gonna point, point at you when you leave, too.
Yeah, I said, there you go, so, okay.
So anyway, come on, Stan. Petitions and requests continued.
Stan Johnson, eight sixty points, seven hundred. What Mr. Severs was saying is what I've been trying to do. I've been trying, I've been trying to get meetings with these council members. I don't get any meetings. So I'm telling you right up forward, front, is about what problems are going on. I don't, I don't need to talk behind your back. I'll tell you to your face. In other words, if you're lying to me, I'll say, hey, you're lying. You're a liar. And that's what, what, what someone told me, said, you can't call these people liars unless you tell them what they're lying about. You can't call them bullies and cowards unless you tell them what they're doing. So that's what I'm gonna do. So anyhow, so what I just, just gave uh Wanda was the same thing I gave you at the last meeting, is petitions and re- petitions to tell the truth or resign, and also that piece of paper that says that uh you guys are lying. You're lying, there is no, there is no report. There is no report that you've been supporting for twenty-three months now. Now, uh, I, I gave her a flash drive. The flash drive is important as far as what happened January the twelfth at the ca- at that council, special council meeting. That flash drives has a video of water going gangbusters into a culvert on U S One. Gangbusters. So here's, here's a calculation to give to you. This is an eighteen-inch ar- eighteen-inch pipe. An eighteen-inch pipe at a, at a slope of only point five, about point five feet per hundred feet. That's a real light slope. Flowing full at, at, at a velocity of four feet per second, and by golly, you can see that thing's going at least four feet per second. Guess how much that gives in one, for one day? Five million gallons. Five million gallons, one day. Five million gallons. Now, I just told you before, it's on, it's on this sheet right here. It says, it says, the ponds at Seven Point Park are less than four acres. Uh, one acre foot is equal to point three two five million gallons. Seven million gallons over an area of four acres is twenty-one and a half feet high. Twenty-one and a half feet high for seven million gallons, as reported by the day paper on Saturday. Twenty-one and a half feet high. That's a lot of sewage. And where do you think that went? Well, it didn't go where you told, told us on January the, uh, on January the twelfth. You guys are lying. Mr. Stauffer's lying, I don't know if he's here, yeah, Mr. Stauffer's lying big time. Mr. Sta- Mr. Uh, what's his name? He, he's lying big time. I want you all to tell the truth. Tell the truth or resign, because you're not telling the truth. I'm telling you right now, you're liars. You're liars. You're liars. And that, and, and I, I don't have to be, I hope Sarah Stokoe's awake right now, because she's, I think she's asleep or something. She's in la-la land. So anyhow, what you need to do is start to tell the truth. Just say no. Say no to telling lies. Just tell the truth, because you're not doing it. You're not doing genuine honesty.
And that's
I'm asking for two more minutes.
No motion, that's our time up.
Okay.
And, and as you depart, as I said to you privately, I'll say publicly, I am not a liar. I didn't lie. I don't lie. I would don't, can't speak for everybody. I think that we're all on the same page. Well, I get in trouble for speaking for you. So, so I very much, I, I make it very clear, and I now, I'll just state the facts. Amen. All right, so we now move, uh, oh, I'm sorry, petitions and requests, I'm sorry. Come on, Miss St. Ange. You confused me, because you're not in your assigned seat.
How am I?
They took it. It's a police officer, we're gonna move him. Okay, you can start the clock. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kay St. Ange, and this message was approved by the Titusville Treaty. Citizens are here tonight to advocate for remediation for the massive seven point two million gallon sewage spill in Titusville. The local Sierra Club, Audubon Society, Marine Resource Council, and League of Women Voters have all written you, as well as many individuals, about the sewage spill and their concerns about it. In the Water Resources recently released summation, the department acknowledges the recent seven point two million gallon sewage spill, which filled three ponds and, and two parks and discharged an unknown quantity of sewage into the lagoon. This sewage bill has likely been going on for months based upon sampling of the lagoon. The algae blooms in the North Indian River Lagoon were exacerbated by the overloaded nutrients from the spill. Space Point Park and Space View Park have been blighted by the spill with a fish kill and loss of threatened species bird habitat. While the summation renews the city's commitment to reduce and eliminate sewage leaks with a master plan, that plan does not include dredging the ponds. Until dredged, the ponds will continue to discharge contaminants into the groundwater and the lagoon and pose a health risk to citizens. The F D E P suggested the city seek permitting from the St. Johns to dredge the ponds. The E P A indicates dredging the ponds is required maintenance for stormwater ponds. And it only requires backhoes to do this dredging, which is standard city equipment. Our area's economy and tourism depend upon the lagoon and the recreational activities it provides. But tourists and residents alike consider it unhealthy to recreate in the degraded Indian River Lagoon. As the city promises to protect the lagoon and enhance recreational activities, we call upon council and water resources to, one, commit to dredging and rehabilitating San Sandpoint Park's two ponds and ditches to provide maximum nutrient pollution treatment, install beam mats and littoral planting cypress trees, eliminate herbicides, pesticide spraying, regardless of any offsets to FDEP's penalties. Dredge Space View Park's pond and ditch to the lagoon. Number two, commit to monthly monitoring testing of the ponds in the lagoon at parks to safeguard.
How long do you need?
One minute.
Motion moved.
Second.
Pass. Go.
Thank you. To safeguard the health of citizens and check for sewage leaks. Three, commit to work with agencies such as the Brevard Zoo, the National Estuary Program, to save our Indian River Lagoon project plan, to plant mangroves all along the park's lagoon shoreline and trees, and create a living shoreline project in the lagoon. A living shoreline improves water quality by using vegetation, oyster reefs, and sea grass. Demonstrate your prioritization of the health of the lagoon and citizens by committing to these measures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, okay. That was from EPA Guidebook on maintenance of ponds, stormwater ponds. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions? I see none. Thank you, ma'am. Uh-oh. It's upside down, I think.
There you go.
There you go.
Thank you.
Some of this you've seen already, but some of it's new. I'm Lauralee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, MEMS. This first picture, that's the Massborough Bridge. That's the beginning of August. The river really was that color. It was kind of exacerbated by that thunderstorm and the setting sun. But the river was greener by Titusville than it was anywhere else along the lagoon. Next picture. The end of St. John Street by the Dusty Rose Mall. This is the stormwater. You can see the black stormwater gushing out of this culvert. Here's the algae bloom back here. You can see how much stormwater is going into the lagoon. The whole shoreline, north and south of there, was black from that stormwater. Next picture. This is muck in the west pond at Sandpoint Park. This was two days ago before we had that rain. This is, this is what's in the bottom of that pond. And you can see the color of the water, you know, in the pond right now. Next picture. All right, this graph, you've seen it before, but I'm gonna go over it again. This, the red lines, that's what happens to the visibility in the water in the middle of July every year. Don't worry about this part. The water in the lagoon was messed up from Hurricane Irma, but it did recover nicely. And then, once the stormwater ponds fill up by the middle of July, after it starts raining, the visibility plummets. And so, I brought my psyche disc so that I can explain to you. I want you to understand what this means. So, this is four centimeters. This is two. From the top of this thing to my finger, that's two centimeters. This is called a psyche disc. You put it down in the water and you lower it down till you can't see it anymore. Then you bring it back up till you can see it again. And that tells you how much visibility you have in the water. This is two centimeters. Our water quality, I think I talked to you guys right at the beginning of August. And we were here, then it went to here, two centimeters. And it stayed at two centimeters for three months, September, October, November, two centimeters. This much water clarity in the Indian River Lagoon at Titusville. Meanwhile, south of us, north of us in the Mosquito Lagoon, they started recovering from the algae bloom. And by December, they had, they had two meters, south of us in Melbourne, two meters. That's 80 inches. Do you know how many inches of visibility we had in December? We had 14 inches. We finally, in December, went up to 14 inches of visibility. We stayed at 14 inches through December. And then in January, we crept up to 19 inches. Well, in the Mosquito Lagoon, like up north of Oak Hill in Etchwater, they were at two and a half meters, 86 inches of visibility. We are, we're celebrating the fact that we've crept up to 19 inches. Something is wrong. So, you know, everybody else recovered from the algae bloom. We did not. I was on the causeway, you know, looking for horseshoe crabs before I came here. The water is ugly. It is ugly. It's hideous. It's recovering everywhere else, but it hasn't recovered here. Next picture. So, this is what the pond in, the west pond in Sandpoint Park looked like two days ago before it rained. That's the color of the water. The muck is everywhere. I know that the city doesn't seem to have plans to demuck and dredge the muck out of these ponds, but you really need to. Even if DEP is not forcing you to do it, that doesn't mean that it's not the right thing to do. These ponds have no baffle boxes, no beam mats. They have no medium. They are a straight conduit to the river every time the stormwater ponds fill up by the middle of July. And then, thanks to the Brevard County Maintenance, they don't even have any shoreline vegetation to suck up nutrients because they spray that with herbicide twice a year, and it dies and it falls over into the ponds and adds to the muck. So, I looked at all kinds of stormwater manuals and Water Management District and EPA. They all say that in order to remain efficient, stormwater ponds need to be demucked approximately every 10 years. So, when was the last time these ponds got demucked? Does anybody know? I think I would have remembered seeing something like that happening. And I've been off the fishing boat for 33 years now. I don't remember seeing any ponds being demucked. So, we have an opportunity. It's dry season. We're in a drought. It's not raining that much. Pump those ponds out and then get the equipment in there and take that muck out because it's just gonna keep creating more and more nutrients to go into the lagoon. The rest of the community, the Space Coast community, they are watching us to see what we do up here about this massive, embarrassing sewer spill that, you know, I believe personally, just based on the data. And you can go on the Marine Resources Council website and see this data. You can see the graphs. Everybody else, all the other water sampling, it's there. Something was going on in our area that exacerbated that algae bloom, made it look like that, made it still be going on when everybody else has got clear water. It's ugly up here. Please, please, demuck those ponds. And then, and then we need to start figuring out how to make them less damaging to the lagoon once we clean them out. Thank you.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
I knew you were going. I'm waiting for you. Oh, Member Stokoe. Member Stokoe?
Mine will be quick. Laura Lee, do you know, will the lagoon tax help demuck at all?
It will not. First of all, the, there's only a little bit of money that's generated by extra tax money that's collected every year. The lagoon tax, those projects were planned out for 10 years. And so, there's a schedule of projects that, you know, that schedule was made 10 years ago. I mean, three years ago. I'm sorry. We're already three years into the process. What happens every year, we collect a little bit more money than was budgeted. And so, in October, there is an opportunity for cities and the county to add additional projects. That window closed. The county commission just approved the additional projects that were added last year. So, the city, the city can apply, you know, they can create a project and apply for the lagoon tax money. I think we need to appeal to DEP and just say, "Please, help us." If we don't ask for help, they're not, you know, they're not gonna go, they're not gonna help us. But we, you know, we need to tell them, we are the gateway. Those ponds in Sandpoint Park is the gateway to national treasures, not just state tourism assets. National treasures, the third most visited wildlife refuge in the United States, one of only 10 national seashores in the United States, the only spaceport on the planet that's open to the public. Three million people a year go across our causeway and go past those ponds just to go to the wildlife refuge. And that's not counting Canaveral National Seashore, you know, the people that are here, wildlife photographers, you know, bird watchers. And ever since the fish kill, ever since the food supply got taken out of those ponds, the birds have left. You know, you used to go to Sandpoint Pond and see two or 300 white ibises walking around in the park and along the shorelines of the ponds. Those birds are gone. There's maybe a half a dozen white ibises in one little spot, you know, poking around trying to find something to eat when I drove to the meeting a while ago. The birds are gone. The things that draw people to those parks are gone. The things that people enjoy. They don't even realize, you know, they're not even bird watchers. The bridge walkers, the people from our community that enjoy those parks are being robbed of what they enjoyed before. They loved watching the birds and the wildlife. But I think that, you know, the state should help us simply because we're the gateway to very significant tourism assets that the state markets. And now, our entrance way to these national treasures has been marred from this experience.
Let me move to Member Jordan. Member Jordan?
Yes, sir.
You're so convincing. You know that, right?
Very passionate for sure.
Very passionate.
Yeah. This first picture here. If it wasn't for the spill, do you know what it looked like before? Was it clean?
Yeah, the water was clear. Yeah, and there was like usually 50 or, you know, there was wood storks. Well, they're not endangered anymore. They're threatened, but, you know, threatened wood storks walking around the edges. The water was clear. The grass, you know, grew. Titusville doesn't use herbicides on its stormwater ponds. Unfortunately, the county does. So, I don't know that herbicides were ever used around the shoreline of that park on the west, I'm sorry, in the west pond. But the east pond has been ravaged by herbicides. But, yeah, the water was clear. There was, there were tons of fish. I mean, you could see that by how many thousands of fish died in the fish kill.
I need some short answers because we are long.
Sure, yes, sir. Okay, I'll try to shorten my answers.
I apologize. But I'm trying to understand the stormwater that we have running off into the Indian River Lagoon. Where's the green? The first one here. Once you head upside down. There's a correlation, you're saying, from the stormwater that we're running off?
There's a correlation between the stormwater, but I think that possibly, and I can't prove it, but maybe this thing that was happening underground with the leak in the sewer pipe might have been going on longer than just the explosive thing that happened on December the 16th. May, that might have had something to do with why the algae bloom was so much worse in the northern Indian River Lagoon, especially around Titusville, and why it has lasted so long.
Now, I.
So, there's two different things. There's stormwater that goes into the lagoon in July and all through the fall. And then, the sewer, the sewer spill. They're two different animals.
You know that wasn't a short answer, right?
No, sir. I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm not sure I'm capable of a short answer.
I don't think you are either. But when we have this pond in this picture, I don't know when this picture was taken.
That picture was taken two days ago.
Okay, two days ago. We did, we have reports from DEP saying the water is a certain purity, right?
The west pond, as I understand it, is still not back where it should be.
Okay, and that's, this is the west pond?
Yes, sir. That was short.
Okay, and we don't know how, that was very short, yeah. So, we don't know how much longer we're gonna have to.
We're continuing to sample like we did with the east pond, which has been remediated.
Okay. Because all this water is going into the Indian River and we had the fish killed and everything, we're concerned about the ponds. And we got ponds all over Brevard County, right? And so, you, you're specifically talking about Titusville because this is where you live. But you assume that every 10 years, all the ponds should be dredged?
They are recommended to be, yes.
Right. Thank you. There's a big difference.
That is a recommendation. But that's in order to keep the ponds where they're efficient. Because if they're full of muck, then the amount of water that they can store in flood events is reduced because it's displaced by the muck and detritus on the bottom. But also, that stuff gets stirred up and it releases nutrients into the water column, and then those go into the lagoon.
So, why haven't I heard, and I'm not trying to be a smartick at all because I understand what you're asking, but you're talking about the ponds, but why haven't I heard that maybe we should be dredging the Indian River where we pour out all of this stuff? Because those are, all the contaminants is right there, right?
Yeah, we are dredging the river. The Titusville is scheduled, I think, in another year or two to get a dredging project as part of the Save Our Indian River Lagoon tax funds.
So, you think that we dredge this, and I did read, I think it was from, where is she? St. Ange, yes. You take a drag line or something and you just do it.
Yeah, and you have to put the muck in trucks and take it to someplace. Yeah.
And where is it somewhere?
Well, there's, I guess, somewhere in the county, there are places where they're taking the muck, you know, because they're trucking it away from the Grand Canal Project down in Satellite Beach. So, there are some places where they deposit the muck, but most places are not big enough to keep the muck. So, they put it in trucks and they take it, I think, to the landfill on Sarno Road. I think is where the county is taking their muck.
Okay, I'm not gonna ask any more questions.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Pressure.
Well, we're trying to move it a little bit here. Vice Mayor Nelson?
Well, I look at this, and especially this last picture, the green. And to me, that's just totally unacceptable, just unacceptable. And I looked at the pictures from the guy from Taylor, the engineer. And when you look at those pictures, I mean, it's like green. So, if we want to be a place that attracts people for tourism, we need to do something. And my concern is if we don't do something, this green stuff from the pond and the sewer are going to be in the river, and we're going to continue to have that. So, I think we need to look at doing something on the lines of dredging and then maybe beam mats. I know Lauralee talked at one point, there was someone that brought in to bring clams in. We need, we need to work.
Yeah. Well, the clams are coming. There's already a super clam project located here in Titusville. And they just got funding from NEP to bring in additional clam sites. So, we may get another clam site, too.
That would be cool. But it's gonna be a long road, but I think we need to start down that road.
I agree.
Oh, no doubt. And I will say, and most of you have seen me at some environmental meetings. The one I went to at your restaurant, I recall the lady speaking, and I can't tell you names and all that. But she was speaking about how all these are supposed to be dredged every 10 years. But she also spoke about the disappointment that they're not. So, I'm not trying to say, "Oh, we're not the only ones." I am trying to say that seems to be something they need to really focus on because, sure, I'd like to see it dredged. I'm looking at some of these pictures. The one Miss St. Ange was holding is like, "Holy cow, I don't, you know, I don't want to step over there." And then that one over there, although I do recall, I believe it was yellow, though, when you were speaking and you talked about how we had such a rain issue that we had, you know, that it was looking yellow. But it wasn't looking green. So, that's probably got something to do with the issue you spoke of. With that said, I more than appreciate, I've never been to a presentation you've done that wasn't fascinating. The passion and effort here, and I'm a picture guy. That says more to me leaving tonight than if you just stood up there and talked.
Thank you.
By far.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity.
Now, the graph, I lose graph. I don't get graphs. But I won't forget that, and I won't forget that for sure. Or that.
Two centimeters.
Oh, I won't forget that.
Three months.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Afraid to ask. Anybody else? No, no, no. We don't know. That was just, that's just petitions or requests. We've had a hell of a petitions or requests. Anybody else petitions or requests?
There is.
You already had your turn. You're part of the team. You're out. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Let's go. We gotta be careful kidding up here. So, anyway. Name and address for the record, please, and I appreciate your, which picture were you?
Pardon?
Which picture were you?
I was the next.
The last one?
I was the opening of the.
I was the opening of the, I don't know, I was standing behind it, I didn't see.
I think you were upside down when you came up.
No, that was somebody else. I do know that.
All right, go ahead, thank you.
Wait, my clock is going already, I need a second.
Oh, we stopped that clock, hold that clock.
Because my speech is three minutes, thirty seconds long. I time it.
Promise?
I promise.
All right.
Tony Shifalo, 715 Tropic Street, Titusville Tree Team. We realize the sewage spill was a great calamity for the city and a great tragedy for ecology. However, it should have come as no surprise if the city had paid attention to and monitored water testing in the stormwater ponds and the Indian River Lagoon, especially near pond drains. We request the city dredge out the affected ponds, then continue and instigate partnerships with agencies dedicated to saving the Indian River Lagoon by creating a living shoreline. That's plantings of mangroves and seagrass, native Florida plants and trees around the ponds and at the river at Sandpoint Park. That's our request. Dredge the ponds, put in, create a living shoreline. In Water Resources' recent summation, Mr. Stoffer reports partnership with the Save Our Indian River Lagoon on two projects concerning septic conversion and nutrient removal from wastewater using over eight million six hundred and sixty thousand grant dollars. Eight million six hundred and sixty thousand grant dollars. Another report put out by the city restoring the Indian River Lagoon acknowledges the value of the IRL. It brings seven point six billion dollars to the regional economy and seven point four million visitors. The report outlines seven projects partnered with SORAL, Florida DEP, St. John's River Water Management, IRL National Estuary Program, and Marine Resources Council partnerships. Three of these projects involve living shoreline restoration using one hundred and twelve thousand six hundred dollars grant monies, one hundred and twelve thousand six hundred grant dollars. The report states that the city has developed a living shoreline plan that shows what kind of living shoreline should be implemented in Titusville. Now is the time to implement this plan. The same report stated that Titusville City Council is considering a shoreline protection ordinance in order to regulate development along the water's edge and better protect water quality of the Indian River Lagoon as well as the shoreline and upland structures. Did this ever happen? If not, I encourage you to explore and pass such an ordinance. If so, I urge you to follow its purpose for alternative soft shoreline stabilization using living shoreline plantings of mangroves and seagrasses rather than hard structures like seawalls and piles of concrete boulders. The Brevard Indian River Lagoon Coalition has partnered with Space Coast Realtors and Chambers of Commerce to educate-
Hold, you got about thirty seconds?
To educate, the-
Continue.
They've, um, with the Chambers of Commerce to educate newcomers to the area on the importance of the Indian River Lagoon and ways settlers can protect it from further degradation. The partners include the Brevard Zoos Restore Our Shores Program, Keep Brevard Beautiful, and the Marine Resources Council. So you can see, we've made attempts, promises, and have not done enough to salvage our most valuable natural asset, the Indian River Lagoon. It's not because we lack resources, allies, partner organizations, funding, or committed volunteers. Is it because our local government and city staff are too interested in growth versus the health and well-being of our citizens? By committing to dredging the ponds and creating living shorelines at Sandpoint Park, the city can go a long way in restoring public faith and public health. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
I see none. Thank you. Petitions or requests, anybody else? Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Thank you. And, you know, we talked about, uh, one of the, she's gone now, but the passion, you all have passion, and I appreciate it. Even you, Dwight. Thank you very much. Uh, city manager, would you want to introduce the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Onto consent, council, are there any council members that would like to pull item, any items, uh, from Agenda A through E, eight A through E?
Uh, D.
B?
D, yes.
Uh, city clerk, are there any cards on the consent agenda item?
Yes, sir, we have one card on all items.
Okay. Uh, with council's permission, I'll read for the record consent agenda items eight A through eight E. Consent agenda item eight A, approve the award for US One Beautification Project South to Grace Project to J.B. Lawn Controls of Titusville, Florida in the amount of thirty four thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-six cents to provide nursery plantings, landscape materials, and the installation services designated downtown Titusville areas. Additionally, authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Consent agenda item eight B, approve the budget amendment for the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to fund the purchase of landscape mulch for the CRA district. Consent agenda item eight C, approve Resolution Six, twenty twenty-one, approving temporary road closure of US One on April ninth, twenty twenty-one, for Spaceship Earth Day Celebration Street Party. Consent agenda item eight D, approve additional funds to be allocated to the existing emergency purchase order to KAG Specialty Products Group LLC in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for hauling out contaminated stormwater related to the sewer forced main break at Sandpoint Park, and approve the associated budget amendment in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to fund the emergency hauling. Consent agenda item eight E, approve the award to Gregory Construction Incorporated of Titusville, Florida in the amount of three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to construct the Titusville High School ba- basin and bathtub box. Additionally, authorize the mayor to approve the associated budget amendment and execute the contract upon a review and approval by the city's legal department.
Thank you. Uh, council, any comments on any of those? I see none. Yes?
Sorry.
There, there you are. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, no, I, I'm in favor of everything. The reason I asked to pull item D is I just wanted, while we were together, just to make aware of the cost, that we're part of the cost for the spill, just as we are about to go into budget cycle yet again. I would hope that we, as council, would support, um, what staff maybe we'll put forward for proactive measures throughout the city regarding infrastructure. I think sometimes it can be easy, it's, it's not a fun, uh, item to support necessarily that everyone sees, but I feel like it's very important, um, that we do our best to support them so we can, moving forward, I guess, try to avoid reactive measures and spending money after the fact, um, versus us hopefully putting that money up front and being ahead of these situations. Obviously, this was one we couldn't avoid, but I would like to try to avoid any other potential, um, spills or breaks that may happen. So that's kind of just my personal opinion before we go into budget season of what I would like to see. Um, and that's all I had.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments?
Um, just a question, is the, uh, the break, basically, the, the park, is that in CRE?
Uh, yes, it is, sir.
So we wouldn't use money from the CRE to pay for this?
For the haul out?
Yeah.
That would be from the stormwater utility, sir.
Okay.
I mean, and, I'm, I'm sorry, the, uh, Water Resources-
Water Resource?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, call the cards, please.
Um, Stan Johnston?
Stan, since I think you're doing all of them, I'd like you to start at the top and go down. I'll do them in the order that I want to. Uh, well, that sounds good, but make sure they're on the page.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, um, uh, items eight A, there's the first one. Eight B, skipping eight C, going to eight D, and going to eight E. I've got a comment about that.
That is exactly what I hoped you'd say.
So is that, uh, I was reading in a book, and, uh, this book said, uh, uh, ask and, you shall receive, seek and you shall find, and knock and knock, and the door will be opened. Mr. Jordan was talking about respect. And once you understand, I knock on the doors, and I don't get an answer. I don't get an answer from Mr. Diesel, I don't get an answer from Mr., what's his name over here?
Here we go again.
I don't get an answer from Mr. Jordan, I don't get an answer from Dr. Stokel, don't get an answer from Jolynn Nelson. Where are they?
Stop the clock. Are you going A first?
I'm giving you an introduction of what I'm gonna say.
Award US One Beautification Project.
This has to do with, this has to do with, in other words-
Go, go.
Okay, uh, all right, so, so what I'm doing is, as I'm telling you about, is that, is that, is that, in other words, Mr. Jordan was talking about respect, Mr. Sieber was talking about respect. Not only do I don't get any respect, but for example, is that, is it, just, just a few minutes ago, is that I was telling you guys about, I'm watching this sewer going through the, through, through the Sandpoint Park uninhibited, and we got reports, it's contained, it's contained, it's contained. It's not contained. It wasn't contained. It went right on to Space View Park. I saw it. I've got all kinds of witnesses, city, city employees, the contractor, everybody. Everybody's saying that January twelfth, this was a whitewash. Everybody's saying, I know of, anybody that saw it. It's all a whitewash. So there wasn't any truth there. So there's no respect, and I knock on the door, and nobody answers, as if the light's on, but it seems like nobody's there. So, so anyhow, on these particular items that I mentioned, is that money is an issue. By golly, money is an issue, and by golly, I think what you could do is you could hire a professional engineer with all this money's being spent. We're talking about thirty-four, thirty-eight thousand dollars for, I don't know, thirty-five thousand for A, fifteen thousand for B, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for, for D. Now let me mention something about D. This has to do with Mr. Stoffer. So I'm talking about, I'm talking to a Department of Health and some other people and testing labs and so forth, and it seemed like to me, it's what they're saying, that this is complete nonsense. Complete nonsense what the city is doing. Why in the world are we pumping it? Because it'll just clear up on its own? As far as the E. coli and the contamination, why are we doing it? I don't know. I don't, I don't understand it. Can we, can we get a reason why? Because the thing is, with the cold weather, it'll clean it up. It cleans up itself. If you, if you watch the tests, by golly, we weren't pumping, and by golly, it's cleaning up itself. Why are we pumping all this? Because we're throwing money away. There's no sense in, in approving D. It's absolute nonsense, because the environment is cleaning that E. coli and fecal up by itself without you pumping it into a trucks and stuff. It's stupid. No, it's stump stupid. It's really, it hadn't got a bit of sense to it. You don't understand what's going on? Why don't you, why don't you find out from professionals? That stuff cleans up on itself. The, the fecal contamination. And that's what it's doing. If you watch those tests, if you read those tests, just read them, you'll see, it's cleaning up without going pumping it and all that. All that stuff is, what do you call it? Facade, flash? In other words, we're spending a hundred and twenty thousand or two hundred thousand dollars or something like that, or three hundred thousand dollars, and it's all for nonsense. Absolute nonsense. Stop it. Just stop it. Get some sense. Find somebody who knows what's doing. Mr. Stoffer doesn't know what he's doing. I mean, he, I, I, he has all kinds of reports that, for example, that, that he contained the sewage in Sandpoint Park. He didn't do it. Twenty-one and a half feet, according to, to the, the newspaper. Where did he put that? He stored it in the parks? You gotta, gotta be crazy. Those reports are lies. Lies, lies, lies. That's what we get. And do you wa- in other words, when I come and knock on the door, nobody answers. In other words, Jolynn Nelson, she's not gonna talk to me. She's not gonna talk to me. None of these people gonna talk to me. In fact, as I invited, I invited, uh, our attorney, I said, how about, I, I called him up on the phone, how about, how about come out and I'll show you? I'll show you the sewage going into the river. You can walk to it. You can walk to it over to Space View Park. And, and I said, hey, listen, what we can do is we can even get somebody to lift the lid from Water Resources, and you don't even have to change clothes. Same, same with Mr. Stoffer. Nobody comes. Is it a surprise? Is it a surprise why I'm saying you guys are lying? It's not a surprise at all to me. So in other words, Mister, when I call Mr. Stoffer a liar, he knows he's a liar, but he goes on with it. Same thing with, with, uh, with these two guys here. When I call them a liar, they know they're a liar, but they're gonna go ahead and, it's called pretense or something like that. I'll go, I'll call it something like a brood of vipers, because you guys, you guys are backing each other up with the lies that you're backing up, just like what I sent you. See, what I just, what I just did was gave, gave, uh, Wanda over here this thing right here. This says, this says attorney Richard Broome is not telling the truth. Neither is Jolynn Nelson. This thing right here, this is the two-page sheet.
Stop the clock. What do-
Okay. And what it is, in other words, we got money.
Get back to consent agenda, and I'm listening to you.
Yes, sir. Okay. I'll go to, how about if I go to eight C?
That's what I tried to do.
Okay, let's go.
Let's go.
Eight C, eight C. Eight C is, is something that I approve. I think that's a good idea. So eight C. But when we go back to eight D, that money is spent absolutely nonsense. And, and what I'm backing it up with is, is not only dishonesty of Mr. Stoffer, but dishonesty of, of six other people. In other words, every, all these council members except for Mr. Robinson, they're not telling the truth. In other words, they, they, February twelfth, two thousand nineteen, by golly, you guys, and none of that, is what you did, is after that, you had two votes of confidence of, of Mr., what's his name over here? The shyster Scott, Scott, whatever his name is, and to, to promote this seventy thousand dollars report that doesn't exist by GeoSynTech who says that they, they deny, they didn't do it. So in other words, you got this report that doesn't exist, that I haven't got, that I've even offered people a hundred dollars to give it to them.
Stop the clock. We, we don't want to talk about GeoSynTechs right now. We want you to talk about your four or five things, and you went to sea, and you gave me an answer, and then you stopped again. Now, we haven't been to D at all.
All right, okay, let me-
Start the clock.
Okay, so, so, so the thing is, when I deal with these kind of things, uh, uh, is, is that when I was talking about, is that, is that, um, yeah, in this case of, uh, of, of D, is that, is that, you see, I can't work with this, uh, with Mr. Stoffer, I can't work with, and that's about this one, is how to win friends and influence people, because it's, I'm just dealing with somebody who's determined to lie. And so, I mean, it looks bad for me, see, but calling you guys cowards. Now, I call you cowards, understand, is because you're afraid of the truth. I'm just ask, all I'm doing, asking you to tell the truth. Just tell the truth. And I, I can't get that from Mr. Stoffer, I can't get that from Mr., what's his name over here, that, uh, the city manager? And, uh, when I ask people to come, I'll show you the water going through there. Okay, all right, I gotta get back to the subject here. So anyhow, uh, what you guys are doing is, uh, on these things, ignoring these things, is you're, uh, is you're tiptoeing through the tulips, because you're really not on this planet. Be real about it, you know? For example, there's red flags, and I especially want Dan to look at this, um, red flags. Real quick, I'm trying to be real quick about this.
I'm running out of time.
Here's, here's Carroll Avenue. Carroll Avenue, right there. Carroll Avenue. See that water there? It's a red flag. Something's going on here. See this right here? This is, this is a dam. This is immediately, this is downstream of Carroll Avenue. A dam, a dam. So, we're flooding Carroll Avenue, and we got a dam. And believe that? That's a red flag, red flag. And here, here, look, look. What do we put on this dam? We put pumps. Oh my golly. Why are we putting pumps on a dam? That's a red flag. You need an engineer to tell you what's going on here. Sign it and seal it, because I'm, I'm, and look at this. This is a picture of me. How, see how pretty I am? See how pretty? And, and you can't tell them, I got a reflective vest on, and I'm at the bottom of your dam, of one of your dams. There I am at the bottom of your dam, and I'm wondering, who in the world would put a dam downstream of homes in a hundred-year floodplain? Who would do that?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Point of order. I have an effogous idea what he's talking about, and certainly not in the consent agenda.
He knows, he knows what I'm talking about. I'm talking about spending our money, and you need, you need to spend this money, get a professional engineer.
Stop, 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 stop.
I'm sorry, apologize.
You lost me there. I thought you were actually talking about something, so. And we're gonna go ahead and say that was good. Your, your time is up.
All right, thank you.
We gotta work harder.
We had fun, didn't we?
We sure had fun.
Every single night. All right, let's go.
God bless you, you're a good man. Okay.
Just tell the truth.
Hey, how many times I gotta stop? All right, have a good one. See you tomorrow. All right, Consent Agenda, we need, any, any other comments on Consent Agenda? Anybody, anything? No, I need a motion to accept the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Agenda, uh, items A through E.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and I need a roll call vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Consent Agenda passes unanimously. City Manager, we move to ordinances.
Yes, sir, we're on to Ordinance 9A, and this is the second public hearing for Ordinance 3-2021, and City Attorney.
Ordinance number 3, 2021, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending Chapter 28 zoning of the land development regulations, specifically designating brew pubs as permitted uses in tourist, community commercial, regional commercial, downtown mixed-use, urban mixed-use, shoreline mixed-use, regional mixed-use 300 and 400 sub-districts, urban village, and Indian River City neighborhood commercial zoning districts, by amending Section 28-54 use table to add brew pub, creating Section 28-105.8 brew pub, and providing for definitions. Amending Section 28-204 craft brewery, craft distillery, by designating craft brewery, craft distillery as a permitted use in planned industrial development zoning district. Deleting Section 28-213 micro brewery, and amending Sections 28-342 accessory use table, and 28-361 outdoor areas of seating, to allow outdoor areas of seating as a limited use in regional mixed-use 300 sub-district, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances for an effective date and for incorporation into the code.
On the January 20th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission considered the ordinance and tabled the item. On February 3rd, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that the ordinance be tabled to re-advertise the ordinance to allow staff to address concerns relating to setbacks, outdoor seating, outdoor entertainment, hours of operations, and inconsistencies with other uses in zoning districts mentioned previously. The motion passed four to three. At the request of interested citizens, City Council approved advisability for staff to review the code related to brew pubs to permit additional opportunities for the use as a number of craft breweries and brew pubs is expanding nationally. The proposed ordinance makes the following changes to the code. Defines brew pubs as a brewery that produces less than fifteen thousand barrels of beer per year for the consumption onsite or for carryout, and may provide food service as a retail component. Deletes micro brewery use includes brew pub as a permitted use in tourist, community commercial, regional commercial, downtown mixed-use, urban mixed-use, shoreline mixed-use, urban village, Indian River City neighborhood, commercial and regional mixed use, and 300 and 400 zoning districts. Includes craft brewery, craft distillery as a permitted use in planned industrial development zoning district, and expands outdoors areas of seating as a limited use in regional mixed-use 300 zoning district. City Council requested a map depicting the possible locations for brew pub. The map was part of your agenda, and we also provided a hard copy for you.
Thank you.
Ms. Busak is available to.
Ms. Busak, any reports?
First of all, I'd like to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think that they were very helpful in helping staff think through this issue. I think this is a wonderful example of the value that they add to the staff's efforts to think through difficult issues, and I think that they have identified some inconsistencies. And should council wish for this to be reconsidered, it would be helpful tonight if you would give us some direction. If you're satisfied with the way it is, or want to make some changes within the advertising, that is also an option, but I just wanted you to know that I thought the Planning and Zoning Commission was really helpful on this issue.
Very nice of you to say. That's nice to hear. I move to council, questions and comments. Member Robinson?
Yeah, I guess, you know, because of so many things, and they're gonna be producing beer, and they want a restaurant, to get, to find out more about how it relates to everything else, all the other pubs, all the other beer wineries, and, and so forth, that we have, to make sure everybody, you know, is consistent, everybody's doing the same. And more importantly, that I asked where one of these was potentially going, they said on Main Street. And I know that that's an industrial area part of it, but it's also pretty close to a pretty rough area as well, and I'm concerned about if you put something on there that, that you open late at night, and it may draw the wrong crowd, and it may create disturbance where we already have a possibility of things that are not going on that's not so nice. Okay, so, it is about location, and get it all together to where everyone is playing from the same deck of cards, so to speak, and everything is equitable to all, and everybody is playing by the same rules.
Good word, sir. Vice Mayor?
Peggy, I'd sort of like to start over again. Yeah, I looked at some of the other ordinances, and they seem to be a lot simpler.
Do you mean other ordinances related to brew pubs, or other ordinances that the staff puts together?
Related to brew pubs.
And, and you mean, West, okay, so you were looking at other cities?
I was looking at other cities. So, West Melbourne, Cocoa, Orlando, it, it just seemed a lot clearer. It also specified the amount of actual alcoholic beverage you could have, or you could take, as opposed to saying a hundred and fifty barrels, they said, this many, this many gallons. So it's, it was much more specific. I was concerned about how far away the outdoor music would be in outdoor seating, how far away it would be from the residence, residences, if there were residential areas providing it.
I think we would do well to have outdoor seating and entertainment looked at separately, because I'm not sure that it's directly related. Is, is that any, are there any issues with that on council, if we split those two things?
No, when I looked at it, that's what I thought.
Good, thank you.
I thought it needed to be separate, or we're gonna stay tangled.
So, those were just a couple of things, um, that just sort of came, came up there, hit me in the head.
Any other council comments or questions for staff?
No, I, I'm in agreement. I think we should go back and, and look at this thing, and try to clear things up for sure, so.
You know, outside of the separation, I was definitely feeling a little bit overwhelmed with the numbers, and how much beer, and how many kegs, and, and it was like, man, oh man. So, with that said, call the cards.
Laura Ward?
Laura Ward, River Edge Drive. I watched the P&amp;Z meeting. Actually, I just kind of caught this part of it, and I realized it's definitely affects me and my neighborhood, because this ordinance, I think, expands this outdoor entertainment into an awful lot of zoning districts in the city. Shoreline Mixed Use is a zoning district that's present on my street. You've got the Indian River City Commercial Area, that's highly residential, and the outdoor seating and outdoor entertainment. Well, first of all, I say I agree with the Planning and Zoning's recommendation to table it so that they can work on it further, which I think is kind of where it looks like you're going. But I just want to tell you that I live in a neighborhood that was literally tortured for almost a decade with outdoor amplified music from a, a restaurant in our neighborhood. Finally, some action was taken by the city to get it under control, and we got a new owner who's been wonderful for years now. And now the restaurant exists peacefully with, with the neighborhood, and we all support it by eating there, and it, it's a great, a great way it's been handled. But it can be just devastating to people's lifestyle to have amplified music outside that they have to listen to almost 24/7. So, I don't know what you're going to do with it, but I do think you need to not approve the ordinance without having all of this looked at a little bit more closely. It's really important to your residents that they don't have to endure that unnecessarily. I know that the establishments want to have outdoor seating. It's the amplified music that was the killer for us. And once that kind of got under control, things got a whole lot better real fast. So, I encourage you to start over, or whatever it is you're trying to do, and make sure that you don't impact your residents with this ordinance, or, or any of the ordinances that will address outside seating with establishments of any sort. So, thank you.
I think you're right. I think we're leaning to, you know, to start over, but I also think that's a valid point to, to put in our heads concerning, you know, you think about it, you've got the entertainment area right here, and right behind it, you've got houses. It's just, it's a, it's a tough call, but I'm glad you brought that to our attention. Thank you. Any, any other cards?
Yes, sir, one more. Stan Johnston?
This is 9A Brew Pubs.
Absolutely, Brew Pubs. What's going on here is, is, is that, I, I sent you an email, and seven, eight, nine, seven, no, let's see. Yeah, sev, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven, and twelve. All have to do with the city's inability to make decent decisions because your foundation, the basis of the city of Titusville, is all faulty and false. So, I want to tell you why the city of Titusville, I'm talking about planning, zoning, so forth, cannot make a decent decision. I can just read a little bit of it too, because, because it's too long. And it says, for example, it says, it, it gives several examples. One is your erroneous flood zones and so forth, and that has to do with, very much with, with Mr. Diesel. So, I'm going to read to you, it says, the city of Titusville, the space coast capital of the world, this is number eight, is a government based on dirty secrets, phony baloney, and lies.
Uh, here we, here's what we're gonna do. You're gonna talk about brew pubs, or we're done with this one, and you can come back for the next one? Because you're not gonna talk about brew pubs? I, I read it to you.
I think you should table it.
Okay, well then, that's all you need to say, and we're good?
No, no, I think you should table it because you need to.
We're not gonna let you talk about that, and then move on and say, okay, now I can talk about whatever. We're talking about brew pubs. This is 9A.
Yeah.
You're not, you haven't said a word about brew pubs.
I believe I have. I believe I have. I said that, that on this, this matter, you can't make a responsible decision.
No, that's not what I'm, I'm looking for you to tell me about.
And by golly, I can say this. And you can say, Stan, you shouldn't say it, but you're saying, because you're prejudiced against me. You're biased, and you should recuse yourself. You should disqualify yourself, because, because I, I shook that piece of paper and said, you're not.
We're done, Stan, have a seat.
I can't talk about tabling.
You haven't talked a word about brew pubs. You haven't said a word about brew pubs, and you go to calling names.
Because I can't even talk about tabling.
Let's go.
Okay, so.
No, no, you didn't talk about tabling it. I asked you to talk about brew pubs, and you couldn't do it. Any other cards? All right, I think that we have advised to move forward. We don't, I don't think we need to vote on that.
What is council's decision?
We just want to start over.
Do we need motion to table?
Yeah.
I'd like a motion of what the direction is, where you withdraw.
So, I'd prefer to table ordinance number 3-2021? No?
No, ma'am. I'm, I'm sorry. Hate to be like this, but tabling would give you the same ordinance back.
Okay.
So what we need to do is just not move forward with this ordinance, if that's what you want to do. You, I believe, already directed staff that.
Exactly what I was saying. You've already got your direction, we don't need to vote on that.
Having two separate ordinances, one to talk about outdoor entertainment, and the other to talk about brew pubs, and that we want more consistency, we want to look at West Melbourne, Cocoa, Orlando, without talk about amounts, and look at separation with residential, are the comments that I heard. And make sure that it's consistent with other, um, uses, and there was a concern about brew pubs in UMU.
And I think that, and you may have already said that, Vice Mayor spoke of simplification a little bit, looking at some other ordinances on brew pubs, so we can move to 9B. Correct. 9B Tiny Homes.
There's consensus of council on that direction to staff, and staff will be withdrawing that item?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I think we all got that out. All right, 9B Tiny Homes.
Okay, on to ordinance 4-2021, it's item 9B relating to tiny homes.
This is ordinance number 4, 2021, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances to amend Chapter 28 zoning of the land development regulations to allow tiny houses in the multifamily medium-density residential R2, multifamily high-density residential R3, urban mixed-use UMU residential manufactured housing RMH1, and residential manufactured housing park RMH2 zoning districts, by amending Section 28-54 use table, by adding Section 28-80.5 tiny houses, by adding Section 80.6 tiny house on wheels, THOW, by amending Section 28-178 travel trailer park, and by amending Chapter 33 development options, by amending Article 1 Plan Development PD, by amending Section 33-6 internal yard and bulk requirements, and by amending Chapter 37 definitions, by amending Section 37-1 definition to add definitions of cottage home development, tiny house and tiny house on wheels, THOW, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and effective date incorporation into the code.
At their meeting on January 20th, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance and recommended approval 6-0 as presented. One member was not present. The staff is recommending allowing tiny homes in multifamily R2 and R3 zoning districts, manufactured housing RM1 and RM8, correction, RMH1 and RMH2 zoning districts, and the urban mixed-use UMU zoning districts as part of the cottage home development concept, with a minimum of five units surrounding a common area. Each tiny home should be on a permanent foundation. In addition, staff is recommending allowing tiny homes on wheels in the RMH2 manufactured housing zoning district. On July 20th, or correction, July 10th, 2018, City Council recognized tiny homes as a viable and affordable development option, and provided advisability for staff to draft an ordinance amending the minimum living space required for residential units, and allowing for tiny homes. Ms. Busak is available to answer questions that you may have.
I just wanted to also comment that this is another item in which Planning and Zoning worked through this with us, they held a workshop to discuss this as we were developing the ordinance. So again, that was very helpful. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
And again, that is nice to hear. Member Jordan?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Uh, Ms. Busak, what is the difference between a tiny house on wheels that I assume is made out of sticks and, and then the ones that you can buy, the trailers that you can buy? What's the difference?
Like a park model, or a regular mobile home?
Well, a mobile home that fits the size of a tiny, a tiny home, whether the square footage is.
There's, I, I hope I answer your question, but I'm gonna start at the one end of this, and see how we do. There's two kinds of structures that you can, you often see. One is a mobile home on wheels, and a tiny home on wheels would also fit that category. Those are not built to the Florida Building Code. Those are built to a different code, because they are considered to be vehicles. And rather than getting a. And rather than getting a building permit, you get a permit to put them down on the area in which they're being located, but they're really kind of put down with straps and those kinds of things. Tiny home on wheels would meet that definition and it would simply, what we are allowing is a smaller version of that. Currently in the RMH2, which is the mobile home park, they have a minimum, let me see, get this right. Actually, there is no floor area minimum size in this, but there is a lot area of four, oh.
There you are.
Training wheels have just arrived. I can tell.
You're struggling there.
I can tell that he didn't like my answer, so he came in to rescue me.
Let me help you out there, Peggy.
Anyway, so these would be typically smaller than the park models, which are typically about 600 square feet. These could go down to 300. The other structures are actually built to the Florida building code and those are not the tiny home on wheels. Those are tiny homes. And again, those are simply smaller than the average size that would be permitted for a unit in R2 and R3.
Okay.
Did I get this right, Mr. Parrish?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is that all you want to say is yes, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
I was just trying to understand because, you know, you could have the same, I don't know what the square foot is, 8 by 10 or whatever it is, and you say it's a vehicle, but it has all the attributes of what's in a tiny home that is built to construction standards, I guess is the difference, is the housing standards. Is that right? The separation is a housing standard versus a vehicle standard?
Right, and one's built on a chassis, like a vehicle, and the other is like a manufactured home. You know that there are homes that can be put into single family, but they're built in a factory and that's the difference. The factory.
They're on a chassis too.
Some of them, but I have seen ones that they actually just come in, they're put on a truck.
Right, right, right.
And they put, then they put them together and those are built actually to the Florida building code.
Yeah, because I'm just thinking the tiny homes on wheels is a trailer to me.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Right. Here he comes.
Knew if I said enough, he'd spit.
No, it's correct. That's the issue with tiny homes is usually a home that's on wheels is considered to be a mobile home and that's regulated by HUD. Whereas if it is not regulated by HUD, then it must be some other regulation and we're clarifying that to say that the Florida building code is going to apply in that particular case.
Okay, so you can't have a trailer that is going to be put in the tiny homes area, right?
Well, what we're proposing is if you're going to have a tiny home development that's going to allow someone to have those homes on wheels and maintain them on wheels, like a mobile home community, then they're going to be restricted to a couple zoning districts that currently allow mobile homes. So they'll be treated the same way, but as far as building standards, they'll be applying the Florida building code.
So you basically can have a trailer in a trailer park and you can have a tiny home on wheels in the trailer park?
If you, in order to approve a new tiny home on wheels in any mobile home community, it would have to be through the conditional use permit process.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
All right, that makes sense. Thank you.
Member Stokoe.
To clarify on that point then, would RVs be allowed in these areas at all?
So there is, I believe it's the RMH2, it's one particular zoning district that allows travel trailer parks.
Okay.
And those are considered to be a commercial use because you're allowing someone to bring their RV on there for a limited amount of time, kind of like a hotel room. Well, that, if you wanted to create a similar development like that, but for tiny homes, we would consider it, we would treat it no differently than a travel trailer park and that's what we put into the code here. And to allow a new one like that, that would also have to go through the conditional use process.
Okay, and then my second thing was, I know Vice Mayor, you brought up at the last meeting, the maximum size. I feel like it's still in there, the maximum of 600 square feet on page 100?
Yes, we, yeah, we can make that change.
It just seemed like the other one, single family townhouse condominium, they all just had minimum and they didn't have a maximum. I just didn't know if there was any con just to saying minimum 350 feet and just leave it at that.
Are you referring to if they decide, if someone decides to get a tiny home community developed through the PD process? Because I believe, yeah, okay, so there is an option to get one developed through a planned development rezoning process. We suggested a minimum of 350 square feet for a tiny home. The other minimum standards for the different development types that could be approved through a PD, we have not making changes to that unless.
Per concern, it says the maximum.
Yeah, we can make the change there too, to the maximum 600.
I'm just saying leave out maximum at all. Like, is there a reason to? Do we need a maximum, I guess is my question?
I think you'd want to set a maximum, to be clear, because the problem with tiny homes in every jurisdiction is there's always these minimum living standards in every zoning district and they're typically 800, minimum 600 maybe for multifamily, but a detached home is usually so, the minimum size is usually so large that you just can't get a tiny home development approved. So I think you really need to have a distinction between what a minimum detached single family home would be and a tiny home. So we propose a maximum size of a tiny home to be 650 square feet, but we can certainly adjust that to maybe be something a little less than the minimum 900 for a single family home. We had thought about 850 square feet at one point, but we don't want it, we want to make it so, we wanted to propose something so separate from the two so that we don't have someone coming in trying to propose something that we can't for some odd reason would be in the code that would allow them to have a different type of development than what the code would allow.
Okay.
We wanted to make it very distinct between two types, uses.
All right.
Member Robinson.
Yes, Brad, if you let a developer come in and build tiny homes in the community, if I owned a piece of property said on blah blah street, can I build a tiny home meeting the same criteria on that property?
I mean, right now, it's proposing that you can allow for an approval of a tiny home on several zoning districts that currently would only allow, I'm sorry, multifamily. So if it's, I believe, for example, the R2, it's a multifamily zoning district. If you have a piece of property that's vacant and it meets the minimum criteria, you could go forward with the process of getting a tiny home development through there, but it is a public hearing.
Well, you used the term development, but if I just wanted to build one or maybe two?
One, we put in a minimum standard that a tiny home development would be a minimum of five units at least on permanent.
I saw that, but I was just asking the question, could I, once that is approved? Now, is it possible before we go forward with this, that, I like to see pictures, could you get an artist's rendition of how this tiny home development will look?
Yes, we can do that.
Also, Member Robinson, I know that you have a sensitivity for the UMU district and that is also included here as an area for tiny homes.
Would you repeat that again?
Yes, of course, I'm sorry. I know you have, you mentioned previously your concern about the UMU, the urban mixed use district, and that is also listed here as an area in addition to the R2 and R3, which are both multifamily. The urban mixed use district does allow single family homes. So I wanted you to be aware of that, that that would be the area, the only area of single family homes. But as you know, urban mixed use is quite mixed. You mentioned the industrial nature of some of that, so this is definitely a mixed zoning.
That's why I want to see the artist. I kind of want to look, I want to see a bit, I'm visual and then I want to see what that kind of looks like before we make any commitment, in my opinion, make any commitment to that.
We can do that. Just so you know, we've not proposed any kind of architectural standard for tiny homes. And so I'd imagine that's something that probably could be dealt with during the public hearing process, but if we want to propose something that's a minimum architectural standard or style, we can do that. Insert it in the code, but we can certainly provide you examples of other developments that have tiny homes.
Yeah, I just.
Member Jordan.
Being in the housing business and no kind of other housing things work, I get to be able to go hurrah, hurrah, let's go do it, I need to, I need to see it.
Member Jordan.
All right, back to Sarah's question. I get, what's this inconsistent on page 100 is the fact that you said minimum living areas, but you decided to expouse on the towny house and that to me seems a little weird. I understand why you're doing it, but to me it just seems like it's out of place because you didn't do the maximum of the other areas, but you're doing the maximum of that. You understand what I'm saying? You look confused there. I see Peggy understands, but you may have to explain it to him.
Occasionally, Mr. Parrish is a little slow, ma'am.
I know, yeah. All right, thank you. Because on the others, is there a maximum for a single family, 900 square feet? Is there a maximum to that? You talk about the minimum, but you don't say it's a maximum.
In our standard, single family zoning districts, we do not have a maximum.
I know, but for some reason you're saying for this one, for the tiny homes, you're going to have a maximum. It's just inconsistent in your list of things because actually your header is minimum living areas.
We can work on that. Yes, sir, I got it.
He'll get it tomorrow.
All right, I have a question. We've been kind of talking about this for a long time and there was a time when I talked to some realtors and felt that tiny homes were a big deal and were in high demand. Do we know that they're still in high demand?
This all started a few years ago with a developer coming to us wanting to copy or do the same kind of development they completed in other communities in central Florida. And they even proposed to us a minimum size of what they would like, so that's why the 350 square feet is introduced there. And they actually proposed to us several properties that they were very interested in doing, but we haven't heard from that developer for about a year now.
Yeah, and I almost, I don't want to say that we may be spinning our wheels here, but I also kind of feel like even due to the pandemic, the excitement about a tiny home is not near what it used to be. This is just my speculation, what I'm seeing. I wouldn't mind seeing some sales numbers for tiny homes, maybe in the state or central Florida, to get an idea if we're just spinning our wheels because what has happened and from what I can see sometimes in the pandemic is, you know, generations are kind of living together if need be and all of a sudden tiny homes were pretty much designed for, you know, two people or even that one person who's just barely at home. They're in, they're out, they're all over. The young generation were the ones who went for that more. I don't know if that's still the case and I don't know, I mean, we're moving forward. I'm not trying to say let's just go backwards, but I am saying that I wonder if this is going to, like you said, you heard from the guy and you haven't heard from him since. I don't know that he's making the money he was making before. I don't know that tiny homes are the deal they used to be. And I don't want to get into something that's kind of a fad either. You know, we go through all this and we provide, you know, pass the ordinance, move forward, and then all of a sudden nobody wants a tiny home and there's, we've got a bunch of wasted time and effort and space. So that's just a thought, not trying to be negative, but it just kind of hit me that you don't hear much about tiny homes like we did when we started talking about this. And I think the world's changed is what happened. So that's just my say. Vice Mayor Nelson.
I would be interested in seeing those numbers too. However, I will say that when I talked to the affordable housing guy, he was saying, he was telling me about different projects around the state. So it sounds like it's still not, I won't say in fashion, but it's affordable for, you know, people starting out, people retiring, people who have maybe some problems, veterans who are struggling to get their feet on the ground, and this was something that, with their benefits, they could afford.
And if tiny homes can fill that need, you know, low income housing, getting started on, that's great, but I think when we started this, it was such a cool thing to do.
Yeah.
It was, oh, we don't want a house, we don't want to, you know, we're just going to kind of be there and gone. We don't want a yard. And that was really cool about three years ago and now I'm not so sure it is, but there could still be that niche of affordable housing and I wouldn't want to deny that at all.
Well, it sounded like it, from what he was saying, it sounded like that there was that niche.
Very good. Counsel, any more comments on tiny homes? Cards? Don't talk 20 minutes and then tell me it's getting late.
One card, Mr. Johnston.
Tiny Homes. Second reading, please.
Ordinance 50-1985. Stan Johnston. It talks about reduction of R2. I believe it went down to eight units. I'm asking if that's correct. It's no longer 12, it's eight. According to ordinance 50-1985, I think that's correct. So we're talking about seven tenths of an acre or something like that will be allowed, you get five tiny homes on it. The issue about tiny homes is, has to do with this ordinance 50-1985 and what the city is doing with its projections. Ordinance number 50-1985 says, here's what the council members are saying, Sarah's going to leave, she don't want to hear about this, but is that, because she voted on this, is that, is that what we're going to do is we want the city of Titusville to be a low rise, not a high density. And so what we did on ordinance 50-1985 is we took the, we took, we took 20 units per acre down to something and then we took R2, I think it was from 12 to eight units per acre. So this has to do with what you guys are doing right now and PNC also. He's gone. Dwight's is gone. So that has to do with you. But of special interest is right now is someone is talking to you, is I have a complaint against human resources and I know it's going to be just thrown in the wastebasket. See, someone, what they did is they prepared a report that took out all my information, completely, completely ignored this right here, completely ignored it. This is Brad Parrish. Brad Parrish, what he did was he lied and he took out the information. You need to know about Brad Parrish.
Stop the clock.
You need to know about.
There's no time and a place to do everything.
Yeah, now's the time.
9B Tiny Homes, you were doing real good for a minute and a half or so.
Yeah.
And I was listening and then we left.
Okay, so.
So if I can't hear tiny homes, we're going to stop you.
Mr. Parrish is talking. Okay, if you're going to take me down, I'm going to, I'm going to ask my attorney to nullify this meeting, okay? All right, okay. So if you take me down, because I want to tell you about this guy who lied, lied, lied and is going to get away with it because of this guy right here, the city manager. He's controlling, he's controlling your human resources and he just lets everybody go. They can lie whatever they want to and that's exactly what Mr. Parrish did.
You're not talking about tiny homes anymore. You got that?
I'm talking about the guy who's talking to you about tiny homes. He's a liar. He's a liar and a cheat. I know it. He knows that I know it.
Stop, you're done, go.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the police to take me down and then I'm going to, I got over a minute left.
Anybody else on tiny homes? Okay, our next step on tiny homes is, counsel, anything else on tiny homes? And then I would ask for a motion.
I'll do it. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 4-2021 relating to tiny homes.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Come on.
How about a second with discussion?
Oh, jeez, it's nine o'clock, I'm getting sleepy.
Second with discussion.
I know, but Member Robinson asked some questions. Everybody seems to have some questions, so I'd like to bring you back next time and get those answers.
Time out.
Our agenda is due on Friday, so could you give us a month to do some research and make it the March, the second meeting in March, please?
Yeah, I could, I could do that. Mr. Jordan, how do you feel? Mr. Jordan, how do you feel?
I, I, I don't have those questions. He just, I think Brad finally got what I was saying, so that was simple. But the only way I would agree with is the fact that this is not something that's going to happen anytime soon. So if staff don't have a problem with that, I don't.
I would go with the fact that it's not anything that's going to happen soon. I'm not sure what the questions are that we don't have with everything that comes by us. I don't see anything real complicated. It's, I, I have questions about how popular are they? Are they going to, you know, go defunct? But I don't think that's a problem if they move forward because this isn't going anywhere in a hurry. I mean, we've got time. So I don't know that we need to slow them down because this is out there, and this is nothing more than an ordinance. This doesn't mean we've got anybody who's going to build anything.
Okay, okay.
Oh, you said that so well.
I just, I don't think we got a reason to stop it.
Let's vote then, let's vote.
All right, so I got a motion, a second. Roll call, vote.
Member Robinson.
No.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
It's still, yeah, we're good.
Okay, let me count that up. Motion passes.
Yeah.
All right, move to nine C, city manager.
So, motion passed three, one, I believe, right?
Three, one, thank you.
With one absent, okay.
We're after nine o'clock.
We are at nine C, submittable requirement, submittal requirements ordinance. On January 13th, 2021, the Titusville Environmental Commission considered this ordinance and recommended approval as written. On January 20th, 2021, the Plan and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance and recommended approval six, zero, as presented. One member was not present during the vote. The proposed ordinance removes references to submitted requirements for the comprehensive plan amendments and master plans, which are found in the Development Review Procedures Technical Manuels for amendments to the wetland conservation area and master plans. This change is intended to increase ease of use of the code as all applications requirements will be within the technical manuals. Copy of the Development Review Procedures Technical Manuels is also proposed in the amendment was considered on February 9th, 2021. And Richard, you'll probably read the ordinance.
Yes, ordinance number five, 2021. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by deleting certain wetland and master plan submittal requirements from the code that currently exist in the Development Review Procedures Technical Manual by amending Chapter 29, Special Districts and Overlays, Article 4, Wetland and Conservation Area, WCA, Section 29-71 Intent, and Chapter 34 Procedures, Section 34-55 Master Plan Approval, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances for an effective date and incorporation into the code.
Member Jordan.
Oh, that was a.
Well, we got five of y'all up there. Everybody's delayed.
Oh.
Okay, do we have any staff report? Any cards?
Yes, sir, Stan Johnston.
This is nine D, correct?
This is nine C.
Nine C, excuse me, excuse me, nine C.
Stan Johnston, I'm talking about nine C. I want you to listen up because what you're doing is really bad. What you've got is, and we're talking about master plans right now, the city of Titusville is violating, violating its FEMA regulations, it's violating its stormwater management, and it has an area of critical concern that is way out of date, started in 1985. We've abandoned wells, we built wells, we've done all kinds of things. It's all out of sync. So what I'm saying is, the very basis of our planning and zoning, the very basis is false. It's old, it's out of date. None of that is erroneous. In other words, when I was talking to, to, to the public here about, about the change, the LOMAR of 2016 for Baker subdivision, that was showing, that was showing that that was an erroneous flood zone by over a foot. We've got lots of them out there. In fact, as I meant to, gosh darn it, I meant to give you a handout, I'll give it to you later, that's showing is that, is that these flood zones for over nine square miles, nine square miles of this watershed is erroneous numbered flood zone. That was including that area of Carol Avenue. It's just crazy, and you won't correct it. Why won't you correct it? Because you will not listen to a professional engineer, and you will not get, for example, FEMA information, and you will not correct it. In 2014, what we did is we, we made a new approval of flood zones, and guess what that did? It did not include Baker subdivision. So what it was, the same month, March 2014, we sent information to FEMA, maybe two weeks late, and then we changed it. We changed the map because we knew it was wrong. We knew it was wrong, and we know a whole bunch of them else are wrong. We've got information that it's just all wrong, and yet we still use it. This is, what I'm saying is, in other words, when you do look at master plans and stuff, what we've got is our basis for the city of Titusville is phony baloney. I'll, I'll sign an affidavit to it, and I'll, I'll do it, but you can't get a professional engineer anywhere to support this city of Titusville on these matters. You can't get anybody. Okay, so in other words, you're in trouble. You're in big trouble because I can prove it to you. I can prove it to you easily. It's phony baloney what you have here, and look what Mr., Mr., he did. What are you, he completely denied this. He completely denied this in his resume. This is a joke, a joke. Look at that. Mr. Parrish, look at that. You completely denied this. We got a problem here. That's, that's, that's a floodway. Okay, thank you.
Whoa, 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 no.
Okay.
That was a good job.
Thank you.
Except the last 10 seconds still got off, but, but when you want to stay on task, you can do it, and I can sit there and listen after you pick something up. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, buddy. All right, you're a good man.
Most of the time.
I did. That's what he should, that's what he do that all the time. Now I'm really lost. I got all the compliment and stand, I'm lost. Nine C, sir. Nine C, okay. Submittal requirements for plan, and I have, there's, Member Robinson.
Brad, I just have one question and send in the master plan, and if, if the earth shifts, we can go back and change it and make some correction. It's a liquid document?
This one's mine. This, all we're doing is removing references to application requirements, which are currently required within the technical manuals. And what we found out that it was confusing to have these application requirements in two places. So we're moving them so they're all in the technical manuals, and then the next ordinance that you have will actually codify the technical manual if it's adopted. But yes, sir, anything can be changed.
Okay.
But that's all we're doing.
That's all I wanted to know. It's a good thing, but you know, if something in the future calls us to.
Everything can be amended.
Have to do it the other way. I just wanted to.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's still Member Opps. Member Jordan.
This is second reading?
Yes, sir, this is public hearing.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion then.
Are we ready? Anybody else want to say anything?
Oh, everybody's ready for that, okay.
Let's make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number five dash 2021 relating to submittal requirements for plan amendments and master plans.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Roll call, vote.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Motion passes unanimously. City manager, nine D.
Onto nine D, this is the tech manual codification. This Titusville City Council adopted technical manuals and specifications to provide specific design details in support of the amended land development regulations with the adoption of Resolution 35, 2016, which was effective concurrently with ordinance 27, 2016. Staff has determined that for ease of use for the public and to increase transparency, it's desirable to reference the technical manuals into the code.
This is, this is ordinance number six, 2021. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending Chapter 30, Article 1, General Provisions by creating Division 4 Technical Manual, Section 30-8 Technical Manuels, Incorporating and Development Review Procedures Technical Manual, Environmental Protection Technical Manual, Hazardous Materials Technical Manual, Landscaping Technical Manual, Stormwater Management Technical Manual, Transportation Infrastructure Technical Manual, and Concurrent Technical Manual in the Land Development Code, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date and incorporation into the code.
Very good. Staff.
Unless you have questions, I don't have any.
Member Robinson. Okay. Okay, any council questions of staff? Call the cards, please.
Stan Johnston.
All right, tech manual clarification.
Okay, I'm opposed to this. That doesn't surprise you, I'm sure. And so this time, I got a handout. You should have this handout, Richard. This is from, from the flood insurance study of 1989. This has to do with, with Baker subdivision and all these other ones in which there's false erroneous flood zones, deliberately false, and the city has refused, refused, refused to correct. So this is, this is the page, page 67 from the Florida flood insurance study. And here it says, I circled it, it says, "Cusira Photogrammethephigraphical Maps, Contour Interval 1974." Okay, up here in the note, it says, it says, "At one time in 1980, the city engineering department would not even copy these topo maps." They wouldn't copy them to, to the public, knowing serious errors in the topo. So it just so happens that I, as an engineer and with Roy's Ward, we went to the city and said, hey, look, these maps are way off. It's just crazy. So in other words, that's, that's 1980. That's even before 1989. And so what the city did, these maps could never be used for a, by a professional engineer to calculate anything on that. No, no calculations for AE zones. So this is, this thing is proof, is proof that, my golly, this was nonsense that the city of Titusville submitted to FEMA, absolute nonsense. It's errors. It's crazy. Why in the world would the city submit this? I can't get an answer, and I know the answer. It's all phony baloney. This is, this is proof that your flood zone maps, AE zones, nine square miles, is phony baloney. Are you listening? Are you listening at all? This is, I'll swear to it, I'll put it, I'll sign it, an affidavit, everything, phony baloney.
Stop the clock.
Nine square miles of watershed.
I'm listening so much, I'm trying to see if this has, and it might.
Oh, it does.
Having to do a tech manual clarification. Okay, that's, that's what I, I was listening, I'm not.
Okay, it says stormwater here.
You're good, no, you're good, you're good.
I'm handsome, too. Well, maybe not that far. Let's go, that don't go that far.
Go.
This is important, guys. This says, this says that the, that the city of Titusville, planning department bases AE zones throughout a large portion of the city, nine, at least nine square, actually it's over there. There's other AE zones that were established in 1989. Nonsense, complete nonsense, and the city knows it's nonsense, just like they knew with Baker subdivision was nonsense. We had five, at least four studies approved by the city that said it was nonsense, and yet the city went ahead and approved it in 2014. That's unbelievable, and it's going on right now. This is nonsense. This is my proof right here. I'll sign it and seal it, and you can't get a PE anywhere in the United States to disagree with me, any competent PE. You can't do it, and neither can he, your city attorney. So this is embarrassment to me that my city, my hometown, would do this. It's like crossing your fingers, like Mr. Jordan, engineer. This is, why don't you deny this?
Thank you.
By, oh, you're calling, okay.
Thank you.
May I have two more minutes so I can answer questions?
No, I don't see any.
No questions?
Thank you. All right, all right, I see no other, okay, Member Jordan.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number six dash 2021 Technical Manual's Codification.
I have a motion.
Second.
Vice Mayor has a second. Roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Jordan.
City manager, we move to nine E. Motion passes unanimously.
I also want to state the following items are subject to judicial rules of procedure. Anyone wishing to speak on item must first complete an agenda sign-up card and sign the oath contained thereon. Those speaking in favor of requests will be heard first. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you may desire for city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit these exhibits to the city clerk. Anyone wishing to speak? Clerk, have they signed an oath card and submitted to you?
Yes.
If anyone has not, this would be appropriate time to do that and provide that to the clerk. Has this item been properly advertised, clerk?
Yes.
Has any council member visited the site or spoken to anyone regarding this item? Thank you.
No.
Item nine E is the right-of-way vacation number forty-four dash 2020 Falcon's Roost. The Plan and Zoning Commission considered this request at their February 3rd, 2021 meeting and recommended approval as presented with conditions by staff. It passed unanimously. The applicant, Brian Hammer, owner, is requesting a right-of-way vacation to vacate a portion of three 20-foot unimproved roads of, of way that lie in the owner's property. The property is located north of Knox McRae. The subject public rights of way were recorded as part of the Titusville Fruit Farm Company Platt back in 1914, which was proposed to be replatted as, with the adoption of Falcon's Roost Platt. All affected utilities have been contacted, there are no concerns. Condition of the approval are approval with, on condition to allow work in the right-of-way once a Pullman, Pullman, Millaray Flat has been approved. It's getting late, believe me. Such vacation, such vacate is contingent upon recording the final plat within two years. A performance bond equal to 120% of the estimated cost shall be required for all improvements within the right-of-way as approved by the city in accordance with the approved, I'm not even going to say that. Such performance bonds is required to be submitted to the city at the time of the issuance of the site permit. The performance bond is valid for one year from the date of issuance and can be extended by the city. And as a reminder, after this one's done, we'll go to 12A. Ms. Bisaka.
All of the utilities have been notified about this vacate, and there has been no adverse or objections, so the staff recommends approval with the conditions as read by Mr. Larisse.
Counsel? Nobody? I see a hand moving anyway. Member Jordan.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
That's right.
We have a card.
I'm just trying to push it on here, sir.
Call the cards, please.
Stan Johnston.
It's all right, I get it, but no, we got cards. All right, here we go.
Stan Johnston, eight 60-point set of avenue.
Falcon's Roost.
Titusville, Florida. And I'm a professional engineer, and I put a card on this, and I think it's a good idea to prove it. So I'll let it go at that, and you'll be happy, maybe. Okay.
Let me do it, quick.
Wait, wait. Stan, are you sure? No.
Leave it alone, leave it alone.
Okay, wow, Member Jordan.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the right-of-way vacate request, number four Mr. Mayor, move that we approve the right-of-way vacate request, number four dash twenty twenty Falcons Roost with conditions by staff.
And I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously.
We are now on twelve A, which is Falcon Roost Sketch Plat. On February third, two thousand and twenty-one, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this request and recommended approval as submitted and passed unanimously. Falcon Roost is a twenty-eight-unit, single-family subdivision, including wetland conservation areas, stormwater management, and infrastructure improvements. The procedure for a sketch plat are enclosed as part of your packet. Ms. Bisaka.
I would just say that the staff has reviewed this, feels that it meets all of the requirements for the sketch plat, and recommends approval.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions? Call the cards, please.
We have no cards.
What?
Let me do it. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve Falcons Roost Sketch Plat.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, we move to...
We're back to ten A, which is public purpose variance. This is the first reading for ordinance seven dash twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance number seven, twenty twenty-one, in ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by establishing a variance process to be heard by the city council for projects determined to serve a public purpose by amending chapter thirty-four procedures, article five, variances and appeals, writing a new division nine, variances for public purpose projects, including applicability, criteria for granting variances, required application, notice requirements, hearing and decision, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, and incorporation into the code.
This is your first reading for ordinance seven twenty dash twenty-one. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance on February third, two thousand and twenty-one, and recommended approval as submitted and passed six one. Your final public hearing will be February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, at six thirty. Ms. Bisaka.
I'd be happy to answer any questions or...
Uh, Member Robinson?
Oh, I'm sorry, just left it.
Okay, left his light on then. Vice Mayor Nelson?
Peggy, didn't Planning and Zoning suggest some additional language? Or... I wrote that down, I'm not sure why.
According to the minutes of that meeting, let me see here. They did make some comments. I don't have, their motion was to approve the public purpose variance as written, Member Porter seconded. There was some discussions about some of their issues, and I can go over those if you'd like.
Oh, yeah, if you don't mind.
Okay, no, not at all. Member Grant asked why it was necessary if the city council has the final say on all the actions of the board and adjustment and appeals that was explained to Member Grant. Mr. Richardson asked if there had a recent variance that had gone before the BAA that served a public purpose. Assistant City Attorney Farrell said, yes, it was a stormwater improvement project. And Chairman Seaver said it was not a private project, but it had been a Brevard County project. Chairman Seaver said that ninety-nine percent of the time, there's never a problem with the decision from BAA. And he said he hadn't really seen the city council upset with the decisions of the BAA. He said he has concerns about what may be defined as a project in a public interest, that theoretically, a private individual could come in and say, "This is for economic development," or something like that, such as allowing a ten- or fifteen-story building would be in the public interest. So he was concerned about that. Member Murray said that, she said it was very clear, the public purpose projects, even though they make reference to private property, and so they had, there was a discussion between several members regarding that. In addition to that, Mr. Richardson said he didn't see the need for this to satisfy something that's already been occurred, and he felt the BAA is being stripped of some of their responsibility. There was another brief discussion about the BAA authority, and then the Assistant City Attorney Farrell said this is an additional process that's being applied. And the vote was taken, and it was six one.
Okay, thank you.
Now, Mr. Parrish was at the meeting, so if there's something that I missed that you think's important, I know you'd be happy.
I just wrote a note down saying Peggy's fixing something or doing something, and I was like, but I didn't say why. And I don't remember when I wrote it down. So, yeah, it's getting late, it's getting late.
Member Robinson?
Yes, that's why my light was on, I had to find my highlighting, so I know what I'm talking about. I remember on last, one other time, we were talking about this, and Peggy was talking about the antennas and stuff on the building and so forth. And I said that, you know, this may muddy the waters a little bit. And I've been doing some study on it, and my concern, under section thirty-four dash three, one, two, dash one, an applicable building, you know, the such as, I want some, I suggest you put more specificity into that, because such as can mean a whole bunch of things. So just, I understand it, I still think it's gonna, but if we make it more specific, I think that it may be a doable thing.
Thank you, sir. Any other cards, any other council members? Call the cards, please.
Stan Johnston.
Thank you.
Stan Johnston, eight sixty-point set Avenue. I need to let you know is that on this issue, it's a serious issue, and it'll be going to the governor, I believe, because of what you guys are doing, is that when I look at this public purpose, I also think of...
What?
OR zoning. OR zoning. OR zoning has to do with flood plains and things like that. Public purpose uses. OR zoning is used for public use. And OR zoning has to do with these flood zones. What I'm talking about, the AE flood zones, and which, when I tell you about, for example, this has got all kinds of red flags about it. If you're an engineer and you see this, you should say, pow, pow. Your brains will go wild. What in the world is this? This is violation of FEMA regulations, violation of stormwater regulations, about everything you can think about. Pow. I think Mr. Jordan ought to think about that. Is it, so what you guys are doing is that, rather than hire a professional engineer, which would cost you just a few thousand dollars, a competent professional, you're not gonna do it. What you're gonna do is you're gonna substitute with planners, you're gonna substitute with your attorney, your city manager, and politicians. There's no PE involved in this. In other words, you're substituting, so I'm hoping the governor will understand this, that you guys, this, what you're doing is phony baloney. Your basis, the basis of the government of the city of Titusville is based on a foundation of phony baloney dishonesty and lies. And I'll give an example about your AE zones. And I told you about the AE zones, about the nine square miles. Now, they have other AE zones. They were just, what they did is they, somebody, it might have been a draftsman, he just sketched it on there and put some numbers on there. How about that? How about that? And you guys are continuing to just go along with this. And you're making all kinds of restrictions and regulations on these people who own property. It's unbelievable what you guys are doing. I'm hoping that the governor will just get rid of you guys, because you're lying. It's all lies, phony baloney. You need to think about what's going on. And not only that, it applies to your stormwater management plan. This thing right here has to do with this topic. Has to do with this topic. By golly, it sure does. Of public use, it certainly does, big time. And you don't recognize it. You're gonna be in trouble, and I have no pity for you, no sympathy for liars. So that's, especially concerns Mr....
Thank you.
Thank you.
What we're gonna do right now, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, because I need to.
Okay.
I mean, bathrooms are downstairs now.
Wait for me, Dan.
All right, we are back in session. City Manager, I believe we're moving to old business.
Let me ask.
I could be wrong.
Mayor, can I just address that first reading for one second? Public purpose variances, I believe. Member Robinson was addressing some concerns about the language such as. I think that follows on a little bit of the conversation from planning and zoning about what are maybe unintended consequences of. When you give examples, opening that door for things other than what's listed, such as public utilities, public accessible parks, recreation. If it's council's desire, I won't say tighten that language, but rather than say such as a limited to and define those types of things you want coming before you, rather than opening that door for. You know, I think the idea of P and Z or one of the members, it was not P and Z's decision this necessarily, but it was just part of their discussion that Ms. Busaka talked about that. Maybe a private development that wants to argue it's a public purpose for economic development or something, so they want to bring all their variances to you. Is council interested in seeing all those variances, that situation? Were you more interested, as I heard, dealing with public things? And if you're interested in coming back with some language that would tighten up the types of items that do come to you as being public, accessible parks, public utilities, things that are listed here, but limited to as opposed to saying such as.
Okay, we're good?
Yeah, he's asking a question.
We're asking for some feedback.
I see lots of answers.
Just asking if there's any interest in coming back with any modifications to the language.
The mayor didn't.
Wait, wait, go ahead.
The mayor didn't want us to answer the question.
No.
We're getting tired here, so anyway. I'm just afraid if you put examples on there, you're limiting us to just those examples, right? Because the such as to me is, I mean, yes, broad, but it can be inclusive of other things. This is almost like IE versus EG. EG is an example, IE is inclusive, right?
Correct, such as is not limiting, just an example, and it leaves flexibility or the ability to do other things.
Yeah.
In line with those types of described activities.
Yeah, because I, the discussion I know I had was the fact that I believe that these, what we're doing is for governmental entities. But that could be a problem if you just say governmental entities, so I understand what you're saying, but I'm fine with such as, but totally up to council what they want to do.
I'm fine with such as.
Me too.
There you go.
Meeting adjourned. So.
Board of one.
Well, it's not even really that, I think right now it's just advisability.
Again, this is first reading, we're just asking if there's any direction from council to come back with any modifications.
And I've done it before, it's like, you know what, I do see that, so just today, I'm good with it.
Well, I just want, you know, you know, I know that this is a new adventure. I know that it's a new adventure, and I know that, you know, the, it's been handled differently on the variances, and I know. I don't know, I haven't been told of any problem that has existed in the past by the way that we're doing it where it's being done presently. So I just want to make sure, if this is for the good, just make it specifically, what good is it going to do? So that's my thoughts on it, you know, if you haven't had any differences to this point, and you're not trying to satisfy an objective. Just my thoughts.
Well, nothing's in stone at this point. It's first reading, it's floating, I wouldn't be surprised if we flip it, so.
I'm just explaining my thoughts.
I understand.
On it.
Okay, that's Member Robinson, so now, are we ready to move?
Yes, sir, we're on to 11A, which is advisability for council to decide if you want to transition residential solid waste charges to the non-ad valorem tax rolls. This item was tabled at your regular city council meeting on January 26, 2021. The city of Titusville currently bills monthly for solid waste collections on the water bill. In an effort to improve the billing process and to only collect the cost of serving water on the water bill, the city would like to explore moving residential solid waste collection billing to the non-ad valorem tax assessment. By placing these items on the non-ad valorem tax rolls as a current, as a current practice with Bard County and many other peer cities, we anticipate significant improvements in our revenue collection process and a drastic decrease in the number of liens filed each year. Staff will bring back to city council a review of the method of billing for residential accounts only. This review will include projected rates, advantages, disadvantages, comparisons, and timeframe for the implementation. This follow-up review will be scheduled for March 2021. If approved, to move forward with the implementation of this action, it'll take approximately 18 months to involve the ordinance change. Conducting two public hearings, extensive public outreach, and coordination with Bard County Property Appraiser and Tax Collector's offices. Staff is targeting FY 2023 for implementation of this action. And you recall when we took the stormwater off the water bill, staff, it was quite the process, so we will go through this process. What we're asking for tonight is if you're interested in us going forward with this.
Let me see some names, there we go, I want to hear what you guys are thinking. Member Stokel.
Yes, I would just like to say I am definitely for this. I remember when we went through this process with stormwater, and I don't know if you guys remember this, but I know that there was a lot of every January, right after the holidays, they'd get their stormwater bill and a lot of complaints. And I haven't had any complaints since we've moved it off. I think that this falls in line with Bard County, what they do. I think we'll, it will help with some of our water bill issues, so they know they're actually just paying for water, plus sewer on their bill, but it will help, I think, a lot of, in a lot of areas, I'm for this.
Member Robinson?
Yes, I've been at, you know, on the council for a short while, and I've been stopped in the grocery store and and talk about my high water bill. And readability will happen with this, and I'm totally in favor. And I've got somewhat of an approximate number of what would be missing, and that's, to some, that's a, you know, that's a, that's a good thing. Very good thing.
And I think overall, over the four, going on five years, that has been an issue, the misreading of the water bill. Oh, I live in Cocoa, my water bill's $26, well, you have a septic tank too, and you don't do what we do. And it's misleading, so if we can possibly compare apples to apples, that would be beneficial to us, I think. You have some comments or insight, thoughts?
What he said.
10 minutes to 10. So with that, we're looking for advisability, so council, any more questions or comments? I see a hand, I see a hand, go ahead.
I would just agree with you guys, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I do too, and when I first saw that, and it wasn't my idea, but when I first saw that, and I thought, I lived in Port St. John for a while, and I used to yell 90-90 boo-boo to people, and my water bill was, you know, 18, $26, and Titusville was different. It's not the same, and we need to try to make it apples to apples. Call the cards, please.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 86 points, I haven't seen, no, I haven't seen, but I had a great disappointment when we changed our collection agency to somebody outside who is collecting, I don't know, so much money per bill. And it's, I just wonder how in the world that happened. I know this is not directly related to that, but, but I wonder because are they gonna somehow, are they gonna get money for this too? Because I just feel like it just, it has an appearance of just being crooked. In other words, we, we gave it to some other agency, and, and they're gonna do all this work, and they're gonna get paid a lot of money. A lot of money. And whereas if we did it, we weren't collecting that money. So they're charging us more, and I don't think we're gonna get even better service as far as paying bills. I'm talking about the water bill, and this is about solid waste, so they're, they're, they're not related so much, but but I wonder because, you see, they were collecting that also, so let's not give them money for this. Let's not give this, this, this new agency money. I don't think that we should have ever done it, so that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. And this is a advisability, no acting required.
Yeah, we'll, we'll need a motion, yep.
Oh, okay, well, I don't see your name up here.
Okay, they are advised.
A motion for advisability to transition the residential.
So with the advisability, we need to go ahead and do the whole vote, then, go ahead, Member Jordan.
I move that, I don't have to read all that, right?
I would say just a, a motion for staff to proceed with advisability to transition residential solid waste charges to non-ad valorem tax rolls.
That's my motion.
I've got a motion and a second for advisability on residential solid waste building to ad valorem tax rolls. Roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Next item is 11B, that's Sandpoint Park fencing. This item was tabled at your regular meeting on January 26, 2021, and Sandy Reller is here to give you pricing estimates and options for the park.
We took your presentation, where we went out to. Oh, sorry, thanks, overdid that. Went out to some contractors, and we got, we got a quote back to fence the west pond, the entire pond that would, with just four-foot vinyl coated green fence with gates. That would be about $22,000. If we were to go and try to, if we were to fence the playground area in instead of the ponds with the four, the four-foot vinyl coated green fence with gates to all sidewalk openings would be about $6,600. So I think those are the options we need to.
Well, thank you, I will speak to this because I was, if I wasn't the first one to say it, I was probably the most vocal. And having been out there during my Titusville Little League days where kids are running all over the place, and a pond like that is and was a concern. However, I, I tend to back up, and I got a lot of, a lot of input. Not necessarily sought input, but I got a lot of input, and it was right. I mean, truthfully, the input was good, and the answer is to, because I'm still not satisfied in not having some barrier between the kids playing at the playground and the pond, any pond, pool, pond, doesn't matter. It's a danger. So I like the fencing of the playground area, and I would back away from the fencing of the pond area. I think that the overall consensus I got from people who talked to me, a matter of fact, they got it out there like, we'd already decided we were putting a fence up, when's that going up, we don't want a fence? So it got out of hand quickly, but that told me they really don't want a fence, they really, you know, no matter what situation is down there recently, they like driving by and seeing that pond and seeing that fountain, and they don't want aesthetically mess it up, but they want to keep the kids safe, so they're fine with having a a fence around the playground and keeping the kids, plus the street's right there, and now there's traffic down there, there didn't used to be traffic down there. Now the cars go through there, and kids could run if they don't have the, you know, if we fence in the pond, that doesn't help them from running into the street. So that's where I would lean now, I would lean away from fencing the pond, and I would lean to fencing the playground area. Member Stokel.
Ditto. You said exactly what I was gonna say, so.
Well, you can enhance it.
Now, now, just so council knows, we still have to go to the county to make sure that they will be able to maintain whatever fencing structure we put up.
And I'm on that, and I don't know if that's it, and you guys will go your direction, but I go to the Parks and Rec Board meeting, and that would be certainly something I would bring up there. And that actually is this week, so Vice Mayor Nelson.
I would, I can say ditto, or we were over at Sandpoint Park for the Astronaut Memorial, and walking down that road, you really realize how close.
How quick.
And how quick those kids can get either on the road or in the pond, so I agree.
Well, thank you. Member Robinson?
I just want to agree, but can I make a request as well? Is that appropriate?
Yes, absolutely.
Make it aesthetically pleasing?
Well, that, that obviously would be part of it, when I talk to Parks and Rec, and they will, but I'll talk to Jeff Davis as quick as Thursday. Yeah, I don't, and that was one of the things clearly about the pond, and the word aesthetics was huge. So I would agree, if we could possibly not just put a chain-linked square, I would agree. So I will certainly emphasize that, I'm sure you guys will emphasize that, I'm not sure who you talked to, but I'll just talk to Jeff, and we'll go from there. Any other comments on the fencing?
Well, we'll still bring you back once we get this worked out, what, what it'll look like and how much.
Yeah, and I'm just going to let Jeff know we're thinking, that's all I'm gonna do.
Yeah, we can, we can bring up options, you can, which ones more aesthetically pleasing and.
And again, I go back, and I think that's what you just said, go back to something I said with the pictures down there, and Member Robinson said with what he'd like to see, the tiny homes somehow, pictures. If you can bring some pictures of some fencing that would be appropriate, because I think we can really enhance it, and I think parents would be pleased to have fencing around the playground. And if it looked nice, that would be another, another step. All right, is there any more comment on that? Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston.
And this is on the fence.
This is on the fence, I'm a.
You're not on the fence.
Yes, I am, I'm on the fence, and I'm, 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 I'm having a.
Start the clock, please.
Okay, so I want you to guys look at these two things, this is at the west pond, it shows two things, it shows just sewer sludge completely behind the turbidity barrier, oh my golly, this is sewage, and then what's going on?
Say, repeat that, because I didn't hear you.
It's a huge amount of sewage contained in the, in the turbidity barrier, that's in the west pond. And then also what we have is we have a river of sewage going into US 1, that's a picture right there. So we got these river of sewage, and we have that, so that's the west pond, that's what was going on. By golly, so, so those are some pictures that were taken, and we got a video that, that I gave to Wanda for you guys to look at, and you can see all that sewage going into, into the river. So I'd say going into the river because it went to Spaceview Park, and there was no containment at Spaceview Park, none whatsoever, none whatsoever. So, so she gave, Sandy gave a price of $22,000. I think you can get that orange fence for almost, it was very little, just rent it. Just, just rent it, the plastic fence, you just go around there, and it's a temporary thing, if you go around the pond or something like that, and you might, it might only be up there for a week or so. You don't have to buy the fence, I don't think, just, just borrow it from somebody, borrow it from a buddy, and maybe some contractor would loan it to you. But, so, so, but what you've got is something else you're not looking at. Mr. Stauffer's not here, but here's what Mr. Stauffer did. He's got sewer that was going from Spaceview Park to the river, and he's got manhole number eight. That manhole number eight was hot, 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 hot. And you know what, the last time he tested it, it was hot. Bad stuff was going in there, right to the river, bad stuff. The pond checked okay, but the, but manhole number eight, oh, it's hot, and guess what they did? You don't believe what the city did? They stopped testing it, they stopped testing it, no reason whatsoever, it's hot, and they stopped testing it. They say everything's fine, but it was hot, and that was about the January the 6th or so. It was hot, and they stopped testing it, so you don't know how, how bad it is there. So in other words, it's going to the river, and, and maybe we should fence it, maybe we shouldn't. But we don't know, because they stopped testing it. I left a message on the phone call saying, hey, why aren't you doing a testing? They're not gonna respond, they don't return my phone calls. Fact is, they got even a trespass warning, I'm not even allowed to go to the Garden Street office, because what happened? They refused to watch, look at the sewage on my car. I got sewage still on my car, and you can see, still see a skull and crossbones where I went with my fingers over about a month ago. You can still see sewage on my car. You think the city, the water resources want to see it? No, no, they put me a trespass warning, don't come here again, don't come here with your car that's got sewage on it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we need to give you advisement. I pretty much said what I thought, I think that we back away from the fence on the pond and get some pictures of some aesthetic please, aesthetically pleasing fencing for the playground area, and I know that we'll talk to the county before we move forward with any of that, but that would be my recommendation, how's your bills feel?
Okay.
I call that unanimous advisement, looking, and I, you know, and you presented that very well, so I appreciate that. City Manager?
Yeah, on to 11C, this is the draft 2040 comprehensive plan. This process began back in 2017. At the regular and special meetings of the Planning and Zoning Commission, staff was presented various aspects of the draft 2040 comprehensive plan and its policies and land use categories. Enclosed memo attached to your packet describes the benefits and disadvantages of a few options the commission could consider moving forward. Also enclosed is a list of key issues and current comprehensive plan and strategies to resolve these issues in the new comprehensive plan. The list was first submitted to the city council in April 2019. On September 2nd, 2020, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended city council consider approving this draft 2040 Titusville Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan for transmittal hearings to the State Land Planning Agency for review with changes as suggested by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Parrish is available to answer questions that you have on the comprehensive plan, 2040.
Mr. Parrish, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, sir, I'll just try to answer any questions you have about this.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Brad, I did have questions. I was reading it, and we're talking about, now I have to be able to read my writing. You were talking about LID, and I don't, I thought I wrote down where, where it was, but you said that we would be working toward LID by 2040. Why not just say LID by 2040?
I just found that section you're talking about, there was a strategy we added in there at the request of the commission. I recall saying that we were working on it towards 2040, it is a strategy to help us, that we need to implement. So it doesn't have a specific date. I will say this, though, all the strategies that are end of each section, that includes LID and other strategies for coming up with different plans and programs and ordinances or whatnot that are identified as strategies. We would propose at the end of this, an implementation strategy, whether it be like a short-term and a long-term plan for each one of those. LID is something we're working on right now, so that's not something that has to be a long-term plan, we can do that fairly soon.
Okay, okay, sort of get that. And then the other question I had was, you were talking about being green, and I can't remember where that was. And I'm like, well, we're talking about making our buildings green, we're talking about making other things green, and I'm like, what about our vehicles? I mean, I don't know how many vehicles we have in the city, but shouldn't we be considering that, or shouldn't that be?
We are working on that now, we've purchased several hybrids this budget year.
Yay.
So, yes.
So, but is that something that needs to be in a comp plan?
So there are current policies, and there are policies in the current comprehensive plan that talk about sustainability and green infrastructure.
Right.
And we've carried over a lot of those policies into this new plan, and the planning commission did ask for us to identify exactly some green policies in here, so we tried to highlight all the green policies that we could find in here, and one of them has to talk, does talk about coming up with a sustainability plan for the city. And imagine that through that process, we would come up with a strategic plan as to how we would go about making, you know, replacing our vehicles long-term or other strategies about our infrastructure. There's also a policy in here about charging stations for vehicles as well. So there are a lot of, we carried what we have, and we expanded on them. So there's a lot of sustainability, green infrastructure kind of policies throughout the plan, it's not just in one area. So it addresses transportation, it branches building, it addresses how our neighborhoods are designed.
Okay, okay, got it.
Any other questions of staff? We move to cards, call the cards, please.
Stan Johnston?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but hold up one second, Stan, my bad, go ahead.
Yes, hello, Brad. I know, I looked through this document, and we were talking about it at the last time, and, and I know that public housing is not under the control of, of the city of Titusville, and they, you can they do what basically the HUD allows them to do and so forth in their dream. But I asked, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about our, our social, economic disadvantaged neighborhood, and I have a big concern about that, and, and I ask that you, when you look at this document and see the city of Titusville moving forward in the next 20 years, it's a wonderful thing. But don't leave those, you know, and put a, put some things in that, in your policies that says that these things will be done, you know, it's gonna, it's, it may be a lot of work to get them accomplished. But let's work to get them accomplished, because I think it, it'll change our city as a whole to become a model city that, that, that don't, that does not leave anyone out or any, in the, in the moving forward. We don't want to take part of the city and move it into 2040 and leave the other city in 1957. Okay, you know, just using that as an analogy. So if you look back through the, if you would look at it, and see those spots that you could, you could do some things that, hey, maybe we can do this in this area, and that we shall do this, not just, you know, this is, this is not just a thing that we can think about doing, and if we get around to it, we want to put it, put it down on paper and make it happen, and work hard to. it, put it down on paper and, and make it happen, uh, and work hard to, to get it accomplished. That's, that's my story on this comprehensive plan.
Very good, uh, very well received. And absolutely, every meeting I've ever been in, we go out of our way to make sure that we haven't, um, overlooked anything, but we've got a lot of issues to deal with for sure. And are you back up?
I was back.
Yes, sir.
Stan, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Um, I was listening to Member Robinson and I was thinking, it's something maybe to the effect of a job training for these, for these communities. Uh, and maybe that's something that we should look at.
I would say, just to jump in on that, I know that, I remember specifically discussions and we went down to, uh, BCC Melbourne and, um, I think that if any, um, cooperation or collaboration that we can get with Bivard Public Schools, they've got the tools already. And if we could, I mean, we don't have the sources, the resources or the money to reinvent the wheel here. And I'm not saying they're not already doing that. I can tell you that every single high school has some vocational tech, but there are people who aren't in high school that need that training.
Yeah.
And that's where we lose it. And that's where we've got to find it. So I'd love to build on that and I don't know who we're saying that to. But I really would love to build on that vocational training, not for the people in high school so much, because there's great programs in high school, BPS outstanding. But there are folks that aren't in high school, for whatever reason, that need the training. So I totally agree. Are you ready? Good? Okay, come on Stan. I'm, I'm sorry, I thought I was clear.
I'm gonna try to, not to talk much, but I'm, uh, let the picture do the talking, but, but, uh, uh, as far as advancing, the city of Titusville is, has got, uh, I wrote on number seven is that, uh, it says for over thirty-five years, the cost of waste exceeding a hundred million dollars, a hundred million dollars. So this is what I'm claiming to you guys. And so I'll just go a little bit over that because it, it's because of this very thing we're talking about, is that, uh, the Space Coast capital of the world is a government based on dirty secrets, phony baloney and lies. And I'm talking about several things. I talked about the erroneous flood zones, I talked about stormwater plants. And this picture, what the picture says, it's a red flag. And it says, it says your stormwater management plan is crap. You're not following it. It says that your flood zone regulations, you're not following that, it's crap. And that's what you're getting from your city attorney, your city manager and so forth, and also Brad Parrish. He, uh, he was author, a part author of Resilient Titusville, which completely ignores this. This is one photo, I'm, Mr. Robinson, I want you to listen to this. There's, there's six culverts areas going under I-95. And when I say two, two six foot by four foot box culvert, that's considered, I consider it a one culvert. We have a nine foot by three foot box culvert. They look just like this. There's five or six of these looking at, what it is, is that it's waters weeping through there. One of them, one of them, it appears, one of the floodways, one of these six, it seems to be functional. And the other ones are, are just choked with vegetation. Talk about a red flag. Boy, if I was the governor, I'd, I'd, I'd come here and I'd get rid of you guys. And I'm talking about the planning department, city attorney, city manager, everybody. This is a red flag, you guys are crazy. So anyhow, um, uh, I, I, I shared a little bit about this with you and, and this is a photo, this is the real thing. There's five, five of these, just look just like this. It's a real thing. It's a real thing. In other words, what you're doing is, as an engineer, if you're doing this as an engineer, it's sort of like cross your fingers. Cross your fingers that the big storm doesn't cause. Cross your fingers and, and when, when the big storm does, you just do crocodile tears. Just like they did, for example, when the O-ring's on the shuttle. Cross their fingers and crocodile tears. That's what we have, right here in the space center. Boom. That's what happened to the shuttle. It was no surprise. It was no surprise to these people who, 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 because they even said before it even happened, they said, oh, by golly, it's going to blow up. And they were right. Talking about morton fire core. So, so anyhow, you got the same situation here.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask for five more minutes because you need to listen to this.
I don't see it. Thank you.
All right.
All right, um, provide direction. Have we provided direction or do we need more people to provide direction? Well, you know, I, I think the, the main thing coming out of here right now is that we need some training, we need to make sure that, you know, uh, we say no child left behind, that works, but no community left behind, um, no street left behind. Um, because I'll be honest with you, very honest with you, I think that there are definitely some areas in our, um, our De Leon Sycamore area for sure. Certainly, uh, Rock Pit Road is, you know, going on and on. But there's also some areas over by Cleveland Street, Thoreau, Shaw, those old homes. Um, sometimes they get lost in the shuffle because there's no one person really pushing for them. I live in Imperial Estates and I can tell you there's some streets and some houses and some areas. There's a lot to be done and I know you're working hard on it, but I just thought I would throw down there one last thing, you know, no street left behind. And that's the best way I can put it from, uh, from De Leon to, um, well, I don't say Carpenter, that's pretty nice, but from, from De Leon to Shaw. I mean, over there behind Jackson is, you know, I'm gonna get in trouble, people say, wait, but we, everybody could use some work. So I don't know where else you want us to go with that.
Um, the direction we're asking from you is to whether to not adopt this plan or go forward with it any further, or to go ahead and, uh, schedule transmittal hearings so they can go to the state for their review and at least we find out what they would say about it. What a third option is to come back to you with a proposal, how we would break this up and incorporate it into our current plan or code.
What's the benefit to number three?
Um, it gives you all the flexibility and options that you have, um, that you'd like. You can choose certain parts of this that you like over others and that can be incorporated into our current comprehensive plan. Or there may be certain areas here that you believe are important, it should be incorporated into our code. Uh, so it gives you more flexibility.
Okay, after the flexibility, is then there is a submittal, supplemental to the state or no?
If you go with the third part, um, any changes to the comprehensive plan, any tweaks to it would probably going to require, um, the state to review it. So it'd be separate transmittal hearings depending on.
Is time a factor?
No, there's no deadline in this project. This is one project, we do not have a deadline on.
Well, you know, I, I was gonna go state submittal, but if there's no deadline and, and no timeframe, I don't mind seeing it come back to us. I mean, I'm trying to get the, trying to get a visual here of what that actually means, but it does sound like we have more flexibility and can see more of what direction you're going if we see number three.
I would say, I would recommend two, which means go ahead and schedule a transmittal hearing to send it to the state so that you can at least see what the state would say about your, this plan. And if we're off track, then we know we need to do some more work. If we're on track, then it may be something you want to consider to adopt or to break up.
Well, then I can bounce back to number two. Well, that's where I was, but then when they talked about, the word flexibility always gets me. I mean, if I have some flexibility that, you know, in number three that I don't have in two, uh, you know, whether the state likes it or doesn't like it, it doesn't necessarily mean it's where we want to be.
If the state likes it, it doesn't necessarily mean you have to approve it. It just means that they'll have a certain amount of time in order to give that.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
I, I sort of agree with Mr. Parrish that number two would be good. Um, I, I have to tell you, I was really impressed at how much work you guys in planning and zoning put into this. I mean, reading it and there's like every ten lines, another comment, so we knew exactly where you were going. So I would feel comfortable with that.
I could, I would, uh, be happy with that as well. Again, yeah, flexibility is nice, but if it would be beneficial to get it turned in and see what they say, that works for me. Ten fifteen, that thing works for me. Yeah, done. Member Robinson, you have a choice, a option?
Yes, I just turned, I just turned the light on. I, I turned it on.
But thank you for noticing.
Yeah, I did notice the light. Turn it off, please. I, I believe in Brad's work and I know it's a hot, a lot of work that had been put into this, you know, it was a lot of work for me to read it. Uh, and, uh, item number two, as long as if, if it comes back and, and as we grow and as we talk about things, we may want to tweak it here and tweak it there, I'm okay with that.
Uh, Member Stokel?
Number two is great with me.
I think we advise number two. Do we need a vote on that?
I, I count four.
Okay, number two. He's gone, whatever now. Five oh, number two. City manager, take us to old business, excuse me, take us to new business.
Yes, sir. On to new business, we have completed twelve A. This is item twelve B, which is resolution eight, twenty twenty-one, amending development review procedures, technical manuals regarding submittal requirements for information relating to wetlands. At the January twentieth, twenty twenty-one, Planning and Zoning Commission considered this item and voted unanimously to recommend adoption of the resolution as written. The intent of this proposed change is to recognize the participation of agencies other than the Water Management District in wetland permitting. Clarifies when mitigation of and wetland surveys are required and establishes standards for wetland surveys. Ms. Bisaka's available to answer questions that you have on, uh, twelve B.
No, she's not, she's not there.
I, I just want to highlight one thing. I know that we all remember Verona and the issue. The additional language in here clearly states that at certain points in the process, you will be provided with the mitigation before you do the rezoning. So we've clarified all of that in response to your concerns.
Okay, any council questions of staff? Uh, Vice Mayor Nelson? No. All right, call cards. It's getting late there, Mr. Stan.
Uh, Stan Johnston, professional engineer.
He's gone.
I've had some experience with this and you guys don't want to listen to this, but, uh, um, this is, uh, worded kind of strange and I've heard some strange, what I, conflicts is because I'm talking to the guy who, who, uh, did the mapping for the city of Titusville, the OR zoning mapping. He didn't say what Ms. Bisaka's saying. He told me he used this, he didn't use a nineteen eighty-eight, um, uh, wetlands map. No, uh, no, he said, didn't say that. He said he used the soil survey. He said he used the soil survey, not the wetland map. So it seems like now is that people are saying, hey, it was a wetland map and so now we're talking about wetlands. But he's saying, no, no, it was the soil survey. He's still alive. What difference does it make? Well, one thing is, is that I'm hearing from a number of people saying that what city done was totally illegal. Illegal, didn't make any sense at all. Y'all, I know y'all don't want to hear about this, but, but that's what I'm hearing. And, and I think that the guy who, who, who drew the map and drew the boundaries should know what he did. And that's what he told me. So he said, there was no, there was no wetland map he went by in nineteen ninety-three when he did the OR boundaries. So this has to do with, with the credibility of what the heck's going on in planning and zoning. And, and, and in other words, this, this wetland so forth. And, and as you, as you've seen before, is somebody, what they do is they buy a piece of property or they bought a property a few years ago and, and then they, it was, it was zoned through the newspaper, they didn't get any notification, changed to OR, changed it to wetlands and by golly, they didn't even know about it and they lost their land. And then somebody else goes around and buys it. Y'all remember what happened to property across from, on Park Avenue, across from Park Avenue Baptist Church? Mike Cunningham was here. So, so somebody else bought that property and did a wetland survey and they got, they got the use of it back. Of course, it was at the expense of that other guy who bought, who bought the property. Because he thought it was useless. So, so, uh, too much crooked stuff is going on, city Titusville, just too much crooked stuff. And, uh, this, this really even has to do with what you're talking about. What you're gonna do is, you're gonna change the wetlands. In other words, when you have backup, when you have things that aren't drained, no maintained, you're gonna have increase of wetlands. You're gonna do it. So you're changing the zoning by, by violating the stormwater management plan. You're changing the zoning.
Thank you.
Okay, crooked. Flyers, chief.
All right, any more comments or questions on twelve B? I will take a motion. I will.
All right, Josh, okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number eight, there's.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number eight, there's twenty twenty-one, amended development review procedures, technical manual regarding submittal requirements for information related to wetlands.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
That's all right, I caught it that time.
It's been late. Vice Mayor Nelson?
Getting late.
Member Stokel?
Yes, Member Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. City manager, oh, we are two petitions and requests, but we don't have any. Okay, so we move to mayor and council reports. Uh, any council members have a report?
I have a report.
Please do.
Thank you very much. Um, this one is real important to me, so I ask for your indulgence on this one. I know it's late and I probably.
Now, look at it, you're talking about.
Hey, I, I gotta do this because it's important. Uh, on, yes, pass my bid down. On Monday, February first, during our monthly board of directors meeting, which is the hospital, um, board meeting, we review the previous year's impact of COVID crisis. Details, timelines, facts and figures were incredibly important, paled in comparison to the candid and heartfelt expression of concern from, uh, George McGeer, Jacob, George Mc, I am tired, George McGeer, president and CEO for you, the healthcare heroes who work here. He concluded his remarks by saying, I will not ask our care partners to do any more than what they are doing or to give any more of themselves than they do every single day. This touched my core and resonated with the entire board. We honor and respect that our hospital shares the same challenges being reported dearly by nearly every major news outlet of the staffing challenges, depression, stress, grief, concerns and fears experienced by those on the front lines of this pandemic. To be the healthcare during normal times requires a person to have a high level of empathy and compassion. However, during this crisis, the emotional toll of losing one COVID patient, much less multiple patients for whom you fought for, for weeks to save is hard to comprehend for anyone who doesn't have firsthand experience. It is equally hard for anyone not on the front lines to know the fear, anxiety for your own safety and that of your families. We heard from Paris CNO Vice President, Edwin Loughlin. He shared a story of care partners who, before going home after an exceptionally long, emotionally and physically draining shift, are standing in the parking lot in the cold with their car trunk open while carefully removing, sanitizing and bagging their shoes and scrubs in an effort to keep their family safe and not bring COVID home. Similarly, we applaud the absolute heroic work of our emergency department frontline care partners. It is hard to comprehend the strain of trying to keep yourself and others safe from being exposed to COVID while trying to rescue a person who has overdose or who has suffered a gunshot wound or a person that is suffering a mental health event and is hitting, biting or spitting on the very people trying to save them. We heard loud and clear from the executive leadership team of their resolute commitment to supporting you, our healthcare heroes, and keeping your continued health and well-being a top priority. We, the board, are in total agreement and in support of their commitment. So I say it on behalf of the entire Paris Medical Center Board of Directors, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Please know that we are with you, we support you and we deeply care for your well-being and that of your family. Please continue your vigilance, stay safe and may God bless and keep you during your unselfish contribution to the welfare of others. And what came to my mind is, uh, if the, uh, council, uh, would, uh, honor these healthcare workers by developing a resolution, not a proclamation, but a resolution proclaiming, uh, February first, twenty twenty-one as PMC Healthcare Workers Heroes Day.
February first?
February first. The, the only reason why I'm doing February first is that, is the day that the CEO actually brought all of this to our attention. So if we do a resolution, I believe that's, Healthcare Heroes Day would be something that we will honor every February first.
Oh, give me a. Well, gave me an idea. Yes, whatever you want to do in my mind.
Yeah, but I just need to make sure I'm clear, resolution versus proclamation.
I think you want to do a proclamation.
Why is that?
From the mayor.
I was just going to say, you gave me an idea that that makes sense. That's, but I don't see.
What's the difference?
Easier, I think.
I know it's easy.
Well, the proclamation is proclaiming that day.
Yes, that's what I want.
Right, the resolution is a temporary support of something. Proclamation is actually designating that and proclaiming it.
But it's okay because I want you to present it to them.
I'd be glad to do that, absolutely. Do you want to word it for me?
Yeah, I'll word it for you.
If you can do that.
Yeah, I'll work with Virginia.
Ms. Blaylock?
Yes, yes, yes.
I'd be glad to do whatever you want me to do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, very nice.
That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, I walked through the park one day and, now, I walked through the park, Sandpoint. And it was very nice out there. The, the birds were out there that day and I checked on the water. And wasn't no scent. I was telling both Richard and the city manager about it and people were there jogging and running. So I got a good report for, you know, the activities in the park, down at Sandpoint. And I think we, we need to do that, you know, follow up. We get all of these reports of, you know, that, that, you know, we need to do everything that we can to clean it up. But we also have to applaud the, the city employees and to what they have done to this point. And it's, we forget that sometime because we get to, you can't, accidents are going to happen. People are going to make mistakes. Things are not going to last, they're man-made. But when you can go out to the park and still walk around, see people jogging around and birds steal and having their activity and finding things to eat, that is to be applauded as well. And not just talked about how bad things are, just talked about how good things are as well. So what I did was to take a walk.
Very good.
Try it sometime, it's a good thing.
Very good, thank you, sir. And I, I like to hear those because, you know, sometimes we're like being in the dean's office here. I mean, because what you see in the dean's office are all the problems and all the complaints and all the concerns. And they're legitimate concerns and they're here for a reason, I make that clear. But I was thinking the other day how I feel sometimes, and you guys have to be the same way. I was dean at Titusville High School for a while and I felt like I was getting mentally beat up constantly. Well, sometimes in, in our positions, we don't get to hear all the happy happies. Nobody's emailing me to say, gosh, I had a wonderful day at Sandpoint Park today. It's other things. So I appreciate that. And I would say too, that, and it's part of my mini-report, but I was at a revival meeting out there last Friday. All I could sit there and say was, what a beautiful day, what a beautiful park. There was, and like you said, there was dogs running around and there was birds. And so for me, I just want to always give you a little bit of idea that I'm running around doing a few things in the last couple of weeks. I was honored to speak as the mayor at the Astronaut Memorial Ceremony. My vice mayor was there and we were spread out and I almost saw her, but anyway. I met with Pastor Black at Gibson Center and spoke about some of the concerns and I love listening to that guy. He's, he's very deep-thinking and very, very spiritual. Met with the Community Revival Committee that will be taking place at Sandpoint Park on February 20th from 11:00 to 1, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. They are on fire. And I mean, we need that here. And I'm excited about the revival coming. And then I met with the Hope for North Bivard Homeless Coalition along with Chief Lau and he was back there the whole time, but we met with them after our last meeting and, you know, I will say the frustrating part about the homeless is it seems every time I go to a coalition meeting and I think they'd agree with me, we kind of say the same things and we do the same things and we're just really not getting a whole lot of places, but we're trying. And then tomorrow, we go to the Chamber of Commerce meeting and we will help celebrate the education business partners. And that'll be really exciting. So that's just a few of the things. And I know you guys get out and represent us well. And again, that's been said before and we talked about some other things. What a great council. I mean, when we come here, I feel good about being here. I get tired when Member Jordan takes us to 10:30, but I'm glad to be here. All right, with, Member Stokoe? Okay, city manager, I believe.
Yes, sir. No action items. There was a discussion about shifting the affordable housing representative from Vice Mayor to Councilmember Robinson. We've provided Member Robinson the information he requested. So if it's okay for council to go ahead and shift that responsibility to Member Robinson.
We need to vote on that?
Nope, just need you guys to kind of go north-south.
Consensus? Okay.
It made sense.
Next information, I have no action items, but the next information item is the CBG, DBG special meeting is scheduled for February 18th at 5:30 here. And that's when the presentations for the first round will be presented to council. And you'll take no action, you'll just receive those presentations. And then the strategic planning, community conversation is scheduled for the last Saturday in February, February 27th, between 9:00 and 12:00. Unfortunately, I have some bad news to talk to you about is the Space Coast Trail that we've been talking about that goes, scheduled to go to the beach. FY21 funding for construction, FY2122 was pulled from FDOT due to shortfalls in sun trail funding. So the environmental phase of the actual trail itself is still on track, but it was scheduled to begin construction this year and it's being delayed now. I think you'll, you're going to start to see more of those sorts of items shifting around as the state's trying to figure out how to make up for some of their shortfalls in other areas. Subject to your question, that completes my report and I don't think we need to extend the minute, meaning beyond 10:30.
City attorney? Wow. Everybody sing a song, anything? No? No. Well, with that, our business is accomplished. I thank you guys very much and we are Titusville. Adfirm.